Good evening, everyone. My name is Ryan Dacey. I am the Vice Chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission. I will be acting Chairman for this evening as our Chairman Chuck Sheen is currently traveling for the holidays. Tonight, we will have regular member Gary Belkey seated, and then with other members being out, we will also seat Bennett Filbrick, Bennett Persett, and then we will also seat our newest member as well, Mary Ellen Montalasca, welcome to join in us. So with that, first item on the agenda is the minutes, minutes for meeting number 1739 about October 17, 2023. Do I hear any motion on the minutes? I'd like to approve the minutes. Motion to approve the minutes?
Second.
Second. Any discussion on the minutes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next motion is for the minutes of meeting number 1740 about October 2023. Do I hear motion on those? Ballot should approve the minutes. Here's second.
The last one's standing, Mr. Lastier.
Okay. And second. Okay. Any discussion? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
I thought aye. Okay. We have a new item on the agenda. This will be carried forward for every meeting. This is a public comment item. This allows the public to make any statements about anything, any item that they have that they want the commission to be aware of that is not related to any of the agenda items for this evening. So if you have any comments about something you feel the commission should be aware of, you are welcome to go up to the podium and make that comment. Again, it cannot be related to any item on tonight's agenda. So with that being said, is there anyone who would like to have, make a public comment with the commission? The only ones? What? Okay. We will continue. Next item on the agenda, correspondence. Clifton, that is, you did receive a letter regarding the expansion of St. Edmund's retreat?
Correct. We did receive that dated November 8th, and that's been included in your packets. This is an ongoing matter that the zoning enforcement officer and myself are working through. If there are any comments related to what has been provided to the commission, please forward that to me, myself, or Candy, and we'll move forward with this.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. That was the only correspondence that I received?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Reports?
The only report is the zoning official's report for October of 2023, and that's been included in the packet.
Okay. Any action you feel that the commission needs to take on that?
None.
Okay. Thank you. Any administrator who you are?
Not today.
Okay. The next item will be home business. PZ 2324 SBA Hero Holdings LLC. Is there someone who can present for that?
Good evening. Joe Middleton, owner of Hero Holdings LLC, the application 251 Greenvale Avenue.
Thank you. May proceed.
So just to cover the site plan that you all have, basically, we're sort of cleaning up the existing, making some pretty minor modifications. We had, I guess relocate pool really isn't accurate, you don't want to move pool. We filled in the old one. We've built a new one that is more accessible to hotel guests, cleaned up some landscaping, improved the railing heights to meet code. So that's generally pretty minor changes.
Any questions from the commission?
I just had, it's at the pool at the lounge. What's the lounge specifically?
So bar lobby lounge area.
So no bar or?
Yes, bar.
Bar.
Yes.
Clifton, I think, any other questions from the commission?
Yeah, just a, just, I didn't review myself for this, it's like, whatever.
Okay. Okay. Well, this, you kind of back up in front of us almost nine. Right. It's, that's it, I'm just confirming, Clifton. So I believe we are still pending, waiting on the town engineer's comments on this mission.
Correct. The town engineer has not been able to review this project, and so just with that understanding, I'm recommending tableing until the next meeting, until the town engineer can provide comments.
Okay. Do I hear motion?
Make motion to table here for the project LLC.
Second. Second. Okay. Any discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. You guys have it. Thank you. Okay. The next item will be public hearing. We have two this evening. I'll just let folks know, most already do. There are signups by the entrance there for both of those projects. If you want, wish to speak on, for, against, or just any commentary on this project, please sign up there, and then as we go through, we'll call it, you can make your comments there. With the public hearing here, as we follow, pursuant to the general statutes of the state of Connecticut, provision of 1958 and all amendments thereto, pursuant to the zoning regulations of the town of Stonington, Connecticut, the Planning and Zoning Commission hereby gives notice that it will hold a public hearing at the Stonington Board of Education District Office at 40 Field Street, Pawtucket, Connecticut, on Tuesday, November 21st, 2023, at 7:00 p.m. on the following application. PZ 2324 S U P Hero Holdings LLC, C. Burke Alter. Thus, we permit applications for met amplified reported and amplified live music at the Hounds Event Venue. Property located at 769 Stonington Road, Stonington, M/B/L 71-1-6. Property located in the G C 60 zone. Seated for this evening, for this hearing, will be Bennett Filbrick and Bennett Persett, along with Greg and also Mary Ellen Montalasca. So with that, is there someone to speak on on behalf of Hero Holdings for this application? And actually, if I can, just to let the public know, so how this will proceed for the public hearing, first, the applicant will speak, then the commission will have questions for the applicant, then the staff will get their staff report, then we will open it up to public comments for those who have signed up, and then will be an opportunity for the applicant to rebut, and that will continue until we have no more public comments going forth. So with that, sir, can you continue?
My name is Clay Moore-Colter, and I'm co-owner with my wife of Hero Holdings and doing business as the Hounds Event Center in 769 Stonington Road, and we're applying for the special use permit for amplified and specifically being able to have live music under the town zoning regulations, and that is, we have weddings, party, anniversary parties, birthday parties, and some of those events have live music at them or will. And occasionally, we will also have, under our own sort of banner, occasionally, sort of afternoon live music similar to, as they do at Saltwater Farm.
As I understand it, is this going to be only inside, indoor music or outside?
Yes. And we had, which I think you all have, any report, the sound study that was conducted by our sound engineer, Carl Casco, and it showed that we were within state guidelines at the sound property on all sides.
And I believe also you had specified it would be between certain hours only, maybe?
We would not have the music after 10:00.
After 10:00 p.m. Is that the same as salt acres across the street?
It's all area.
Saltwater, sorry.
Yeah.
Okay. Commission, any questions? Do we have?
Thank you. So we know outside?
Right.
No tents, no?
But we may have a tent, but we won't have music in the tent.
No speakers in the tent?
Right.
Nothing placed in from indoors?
Right.
How about windows and doors being opened during music?
That may happen, but it will be, we did the sound test at 90 decibels inside, I think that was where we were, and when the doors opened and closed, we've got sliding doors across the back of the building, and in both circumstances, it was within the state guidelines of the property line.
Okay.
And aren't the neighbors sure I'm going anywhere?
No. Okay. Thank you, Dan. Have fun.
Thank you. Dan, any questions? Here? No. No questions? Okay. All right. Clifton?
No other comments. The only thing that was put in the report was that the stipulation should just, you know, reconfirm that music will be played indoors at all times, and the amplify, and the music will be played between the hours of 9:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m.
Okay. Okay. Is there anybody who wishes to speak on this application? I don't see anybody to sign up, but just in case somebody changed their mind, is there anybody who'd like to speak in favor, against, or just commentary in general on this application? I don't see anybody. All right? Okay. With that?
Make a motion to close the hearing?
Second. Second. Thank you. All right. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Make a motion to approve Hero Holdings LLC.
Thank you.
That's I need to.
And here, second. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Guys have it.
Thank you. Don't care now.
Okay. 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 Next, full panel. Okay. Next public hearing. Pursuant to the general statute of the state of Connecticut, provision of 1958 and all amendments thereto, pursuant to the zoning regulations of the town of Stonington, Connecticut, the Planning and Zoning Commission hereby gives notice that it will hold a public hearing at the Stonington Board of Education District Office at 40 Field Street, Pawtucket, Connecticut, on Tuesday, November 21st, 2023, at 7:00 p.m. on the following application. PZ 2322 SBA G P P Fair Housing of Connecticut LLC, M. Renelli. Site plan application and groundwater protection permit applications for an affordable housing project submitted pursuant to CGS 8-30G. Proposal consists of 113 single-family housing units and associated site improvements. Properties located at 207-215 and an unaddressed parcel on Liberty Street, Pawtucket, M/B/L 16-4-12, 16-4-12A, and 16-4-13. Properties are located in the L S-5 zone. So seated for this evening's hearing, again, will be Bennett Filbrick and Bennett Persett, along with regular competitors, Gary Belkey and myself, and also seated will be Mary Ellen Montalasca. The order of this meeting is the same as the prior. So first, the applicant will speak and present, then the commission will have questions, we will get the staff report, and then the public comment, so basically, we've signed up, and the applicant has an opportunity to rebut, and we will go with that until there are further comments or proposal needed. So with that, for the applicant?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Matt Renelli from the Law Firm of Shipman and Goodwin. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Better Housing of Connecticut LLC, on the application. Before I get started, am I speaking loud enough? Can you guys hear me?
I can hear good folks in the back here as well.
All right. If I, if I get away from the mic, just give me the signal, and I'll sort of speak up. First, thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening to present our application. We're excited to, to answer any questions that you have. We also would like to thank staff for their assistance and a number of town offices that we consulted with who have provided their time, and they put, grateful for, and we'll hear a little bit about that as we go on. What I'd like to do is tell you who we have with us this evening. I'll do a short introduction, and then I'll turn it over to the subject matter experts who can really tell you what's going on on the site. So we have Gina Urbanez, who's the principal of Fair Housing with us. We have Sergio Trenzia, who is our lead engineer, who I believe you're familiar with, Paul Azanero, who is principal of Azanero Architects, who is our architect. We have Josh Wheeler, our landscape architect, senior landscape architect at BL Companies, and Mike Dionne, who's a engineer, a traffic engineer, senior traffic engineer at BL Companies as well. As read in the introduction, we have a site plan application before you for 113 units of townhouse-style housing and associated upgrades to the site at Liberty Street. That area is, as you know, located as sort of a transition between the exit 92 interchange area and the downtown area. It's currently in mixed use, including the subject property, which you'll hear about, which is a, in commercial use, or recently has been, it's been closed for some time now. And what I'd like to do is just talk a little bit about our application. As I mentioned, it's filed pursuant to section 8-30G of the general statute, so it is a little different than a traditional zoning application. I know this commission has recently completed the town's affordable housing plan, so those of you who worked on it, I'm sure are familiar with it, and you've also had affordable housing applications, but because they're not the regular fare that you get over hearing, I just wanted to take a minute and give a little bit of background and talk a little bit about the standard, and your, obviously, your staff can advise you on this as well. 8-30G, as it's referred to, is the Affordable Housing Appeals Act. It was passed by the legislature in the late 80s, and the intent at the time and currently is to encourage the development of an adequate supply of affordable housing throughout the state of Connecticut. The conditions back in the late 80s, for those of us who were around them, were, you know, were very expensive, housing affordability was out of reach for many, and it was also at the time when the states were cutting back the amount of money they were using to develop, to build subsidized affordable housing. 8-30G was a result of a blue ribbon commissioned by the governor's office at the time to look for market-based ways to encourage affordable housing. So the concept is quite simple, that the statute allows developers to come in with proposals that may vary from the underlying zoning regulations, but in return for doing that, they have to guarantee deed restrict a percentage of the units as affordable housing for a certain length of time. Over the years, since the act was originally passed, that amount of housing has increased, the amount of percentage it needs to be affordable has increased to 30%, and the term of the affordability has increased to 40%. So they've made it, you know, more robust to provide more housing for a longer period of time. And it's, it's, you know, completely a market-based part of the statute. Developers can try to achieve this, or they can just develop traditional housing, which, as you know, is what most developers do, and that's why we don't have a lot of affordable housing. It's, you know, there are challenges. So the statute gives you guidance on what you should listen for in your hearing and what your decision criteria are, because as I mentioned, it's not like a traditional zoning application, your criteria is, you look at your regulations, you look at the plan, and you say, do they comply? What the statute says is that the commission should look to see that its reason for decision is necessary to protect a substantial public interest in health, safety, or other matters that it may need to consider, and that such interests clearly outweigh the need for affordable housing, and finally, that such public interest cannot be protected by reasonable changes to the proposed affordable housing development. Each one of these, I think, is important, but I'll start with the last one, because that one is that whatever the interests can't be protected by reasonable changes. So what the statute envisioned was somewhat of a collaborative approach. Obviously, we have to have the burden of designing a plan, but when we come here, if there are changes that will address your concerns, you know, you should tell us. I know that happens in the normal area, but sometimes it also happens after the close of the public hearing, but, but the idea is that if there are reasonable changes that can be made, the statute encourages that path to facilitate and encourage affordable housing as opposed to, you know, to denials. So there's a preference not to deny. And then in terms of the first ones, again, your regulations are obviously there for a reason, but what you look at in this case, for example, what you might have in a normal application, is whether the issue that's raised by the application is, you know, a denial necessary to protect a substantial public interest in health, safety, or other matters. So it's not so much, does it meet the regulation, but it's really, is, does it create a, for example, unsafe condition? And so we'll, we will, when we take you through the presentation, we'll show you that our plan complies with all building codes, all life safety codes, and all the utilities, for example, we have public water, public sewers, those are perfectly safe. Our stormwater management meets, you know, improves the stormwater management of what's up in the existing site and meets, you know, modern stormwater planning criteria. So you'll hear that from our experts, but that's the kind of thing that you'll want to look for and listen for, and frankly, ask us questions if you have to. In terms of, the other, the other part of the criteria I talked about was whether or not the interest outweighs the need for affordable housing. So this is also important. You need to look at the need for affordable housing as part of, as part of what you review. So in Stonington, there is a huge need for affordable housing, as there, really, there is statewide. Stonington is not alone in that position. Currently, according to the Department of Affordable Housing Appeals List, Stonington has approximately 6.07%. Housing stock is, qualifies as affordable under the criteria. And of that, only two units on the current list are actually deed restricted. So the other units receive some kind of government assistance that makes them qualify, but they're not deed restricted, so those should change. What we're proposing tonight are units that will be deed restricted, which means they will be available to people who qualify for affordable housing under the income test at all times that they're turned over. And we've submitted in materials that we've divided, there's a, what's called an affordability plan, which is, basically, it's a draft plan. It doesn't get finalized, obviously, until we have approval, and then it gets updated when we start to get CEOs. But it has, basically, how the affordability will be evaluated, and all of that is consisting with the town, with the state regulations and federal regulations for evaluating affordability. It also gives a sample price of the units, and it also provides a model deed restriction. So that's in the, in the record, you're obviously, we're happy to talk about that as, as we go on. The other thing in terms of the need for affordable housing, in addition to the, to the number of units, the Stonington Plan of Conservation and Development recognizes the need for affordable housing in Stonington and encourages or recommends a diversified portfolio of housing in, within the plan, recognize that, I believe that's a page 72. And as I mentioned, the town recently adopted its affordable housing plan based on the new statute requirement of USO, which also recognizes the need to encourage the development of affordable housing. So people who either live here, want to downsize, or people who have, you know, children, or other folks who want to have an entry level house in Stonington, or people who work in Stonington have a home they can afford near where they work. You'll notice the one thing that we don't, one of the things we don't have in our application package is there's no, oftentimes with an affordable housing application, there'll be a zoning regulation. We do not provide an updated regulation here. It's not mandatory. We would be happy to do so, but after consultation with staff and reviewing it, the idea was not to ask you to adopt a new regulation into your zoning regulations. If you didn't want to do that, and whereupon it's not required, in other words, you can approve the site plan without the addition of a new regulation. So as I said, the site is served by water and sewer, and I believe in the, in the staff report, you'll see, receive word from the WBCA that there's adequate capacity, and we've also heard from Westley Water that they can serve the project with public water. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to turn this over to certain, oh, I should mention, there's no weapons, the architect has decided we're not in a flood hazard zone, so you'll know those are, are issues if you consider. I'll turn this over to Sergio. He's going to walk you through the site layout, and then he will go through the stormwater management plan, which is completely improved from the current site, which currently is mostly untreated and uncontrolled runoff. He will also take you through the utilities layout and the sewer and water layouts. Then we'll turn it over to our architect, Paul Azanero, who will walk you through the unit designs and, you know, code compliance for that. And then after that, you'll hear from Josh Wheeler, our landscape architect, who will take you through that portion of the plan, and then finally, our traffic report from Mike Dionne. And, Mr. Chairman, whatever your preference is, if you'd like to ask us questions along the way, that's fine, or if you would like to ask us questions at the end of our presentation, which I think is your practice, that's fine as well.
I would say that in a sufficient degree, you can ask your questions as we go, as we have the receipts, you know, there we'll do that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great. So Sergio?
Mr. Chairman, just need a moment to get set up, so you're probably, the exhibits up. Okay. I believe every technical glitches are off. For the record, Sergio Trenzia, with Trenzia and Associates, offices located at 99 Mechanic Street, Pawtucket, Connecticut. The, the supplemental package was put together by my office. Plans that were presented to you this evening for the land survey and the site civil engineering plans were prepared by my office under my responsible charge, and I am a licensed engineer in the state of Connecticut. The project before you this evening, as Mr. Renelli has gone through, Beachway Estates, E3G Affordable Housing Project, located at 207-215 Liberty Street in one unnamed lot, the lot map 16, Lot 4, lots 12, 12A and 13. I've brought up the GIS map here just to orient everybody. The three lots which we're talking about, the large- The three lots which we're talking about, the larger lot here I'm highlighting, that is 215 Liberty Street, just south of it is 207, and then the unnamed lot. That was, I believe there was a previous structure, the southern portion of lot that date back over 10, 10 or 15 years. That was demolished and it's just been an open, open lot area. There is remnants of a walkway, I think that went up to the pre-existing building. The existing lot, between all three lots is about 4.24 acres. The lot had been historically developed with, you can see the large building here, which was originally built around 1983. It was Rosalines and subsequent to that, has remained a bar, restaurant, nightclub. For a period of time, it was Fuji Garden, I think you might remember that. And then most recently, before Mr. Arnes took it over, it was the Phoenix. And then there was some, I believe some out structures and patio areas and some volleyball courts that were put, that were placed in the rear of the property when it was functioning as the Phoenix. When Mr. Arnes purchased it, he resurrected the old Rosalines nightclub for a period of time, but as Mr. Renelli had identified, that's since been closed and the lot has been sitting, you know, vacant for the period of time, which Mr. Arnes is looking to put this proposal for. The site, as you can see, is substantially, quite a bit of pavement on the site. The back is, has been maintained as grassy type area with some fringe trees, mature trees that are against the two properties to the east, one of which is the Town of Westerly owns the property to the northeast and to the southeast is owned by the Town of Stonington. This is the Westline School Lot. If you can't see the school here, we can scroll over, you can see it. To the south and to the north and to the west, all are residentially used in and zoned lots. Can bring up the zoning map just for frame of reference. This site is a LS5, a local shopping, it's a local shopping, all of the lots here. As you can see, it's surrounded by residentially zoned property RH10. It's relatively density, you know, 10,000 square foot lots. And then to the east, GP130. Apparently, that's a green belt type of zone in town. As far as, I just want to touch upon, while I have this plan up or this figure up, the GIS, majority of the stormwater on the site, it only hits two locations. There's a catch basin up in this area. It's tough to see on this aerial map that handles some of the stormwater from the site, but you can also see down in this spot here, there's another catch basin. This handles quite a bit of the stormwater from the site and it handles, it really doesn't do much. There's a drywall there, there's no formal drainage system that ties into a state drainage system or conveys water to a water course elsewhere. So these largely, what happens is the water on the site goes to these two catch basins and whatever isn't infiltrated, it sits on the site for a period of time. And you can see, I have a photo actually. You can see there is, this was actually just a Google capture from 2018. And you can see where that catch basin is. It does not do much for handling the stormwater. It basically ponds in the parking lot. When it overflows, it overflows to the south and travels behind adjacent properties until reaching a destination. I believe there's a stormwater pond further down, down Liberty Street. So just to make the point that there really isn't much stormwater management historically happening on this site. Referencing my existing conditions plan, you can see the topography, the low points and the catch basin in this location on this site where really much of the stormwater is consolidated. And then it pretty much follows a path off the site, but it overflows down the backs of these properties. You can see there's more or less a high point here, but there's a low point behind these properties in Liberty Street and it continues to travel in that direction. Same thing here is the, there's a catch basin here with a drywall in the back. It's harder to see because it's relatively overgrown back here at this time. Let's zoom out a little bit on the GIS map just to give some other context. So that's, you know, basically the existing site. Around the site, as I had mentioned, is the Town of Westerly property to the northeast and the Town of Stonington. Just across or just beyond the Westerly property is the Pawtucket River. And just on the other side of that, for context, is the well pump and the well fields for the Town of Westerly. And I think that's largely, we, you know, many of you are aware, this is a groundwater protection area. And largely, that groundwater protection area is coming over from Rhode Island and comes into this portion of Connecticut and into Stonington. We're about 1,000 feet from that river and then there being the wells are on the other side of that. As far as any natural diversity or the D and natural diversity database, most of it just surrounds the Pawtucket River. Also, as I mentioned, we're more than 1,000 feet away, so we don't see that there's going to be an impact. There's no wetlands on the site or in the vicinity of the site. We're not in the flood zone on this property. The site is accessed by two curb cuts on the front of the site, both with two-way traffic. That'll be important when we get into the proposed conditions. And as Mr. Renelli had indicated, this is between exit 92, Route 78 to the north and downtown Pawtucket to the south. The site is serviced by Westerly Water and sewer, which is controlled by the Water Police Control Board. We have identified that there is adequate sewer and water to serve the proposed development. There's also gas service located in Liberty Street and we have accommodated, if my clients will choose us to accommodate the gas service to these buildings, as well as electrical, making sure that we've had appropriate metering locations for both gas and transformers and then like to serve all the utilities. With that, I'm going to bring up the proposed site plan. So you can see the proposed site plan. We have two curb cuts on the left side or on the west side from Liberty Street. Those do not line up with the existing curb cuts. We had to modify their location. Mr. Dion will get into a little bit more with that, but we have identified, we have provided a site line plan and given the grades along Liberty Street, I believe we can see upwards of 500 feet in either direction from either curb cut, both with two-way traffic. The site accommodates, as you can tell, you know, they're densely packed in here, but the, on either side of the roadway system, we have two different types of units. The units that are more rectangular or, excuse me, more square in shape, those are what we call unit type A. Those have a garage, two-car garage below with two stories above, all three-bedroom units. You can see that we have a stamped paved apron of about eight feet in front of those. Those will double as both a, you know, a delineator for pedestrian use, but also double as guest parking in front of the units, in front of the, in front of the doors as parallel spaces. There's 36 feet between door to door on these units. So even with the, with the aprons in front of them, we still have a 20-foot drive aisle between, for passage of vehicles. The, behind the units, there's approximately 10 feet of grass space dedicated to each unit. You can see between these two rows, we have about 20 feet in this area, 10 feet behind here, same thing behind these units, about 10 feet of space behind them. The second type of unit we have is type B unit. These are for, have bedrooms on the first floor that are accessible, therefore we need parking outside. And those will have parking spaces in front. And we've also accommodated all of the guest parking that's required, prior regulations at a one per four for those units that cannot park in front of their units for a guest space. So every, but every, every unit has a minimum of two parking spaces, whether it be in a garage or it be in front of the unit.
If I may ask, how many total guest spaces do you have there? Dedicated guest spaces?
Oh, dedicated ones? I believe it's two, I think there's nine of them. I have to check the plan here. Hold on, I'll check that. Yeah, it's nine guest spaces. So then, so in front of the units, we can accommodate 78 of the 113. Of the remaining, of the remaining units, one per four, we may, we need the quota of nine. So there, there's, that's the 36, I believe, whatever nine times four is 36 plus the 78. So that's the, that's pretty much the layout of the site. There's not a lot of surface space, as you can tell, to do things like, the landscape architect will get through, get to the landscaping on the project. As far as, I'd like to go into some of the stormwater management. So this plan shows the underground storage and infiltration system. We've conducted extensive testing on the site with respect to soils. We've done test pits and there've been geotechnical borings. We've identified portions of the site where we can infiltrate into the ground. So what we will do is catching the stormwater in these catch basins in the middle of these drive aisles, for the most part. Some other areas also collecting, piping them to the storage system. The storage system has what's noted, noted as isolator rows, which provide the pretreatment prior to filling up the rest of the system, providing the capacity and also the infiltration, observing all separation, necessary separation of water. We have, we do have some comments from the town engineer on bolstering this system. He wanted to see some more mechanical separators, which we're currently working on trying to accommodate. This system is, you know, does provide levels of pretreatment. We provide loading analysis, that's widely accepted. Connecticut doesn't have something really to turn to, so we've been using some standards in Rhode Island. Your town engineer has encouraged us to look outside the box for other solutions, good engineering practice, which we are happy to do. He says, he has, we've had multiple, multiple meetings and on occasion, he says, you know, there's standards in New Hampshire, Maine, Massachusetts, and as long as it's good engineering practice, he's willing to accept those and we've sent them over to him for his evaluation. So I can tell you that this is a considerable improvement of what's on the site now. There's hardly any treatment, hardly any storage at all, if any, and no infiltration back into the, into the ground. This system will introduce such and will be doing it in such a way which we feel will be treated appropriately prior to discharge it to the, into the ground. It does have an overflow at the southern end, so when the system does fill up and eventually, we all know that we've been getting 100-year storms in the plus, so we do have a fail-safe that there's a level spreader at the southern portion of the property. Town engineer has asked us to expand this, which we can happily do, but basically that serves as an overflow for extreme storm events. But in most cases, that this water is going to be stored and infiltrated on site. Given the extensive underground stormwater system, didn't leave a lot of room for utilities, but we also showed all the utilities. We've coordinated with the fire chief on making sure with FireMark, there'll be communications, electrical, all underground, as well as water and sewer. Getting this all to fit in one nice package was a challenge, but we've, we've been able to accommodate all the utilities and make sure that, that everything can fit onto the site, albeit it's going to be very, very congested on the ground.
If I may ask a question, is there, Mike will sit reading the plan, is there a fire suppression systems for the units? Any kind of?
When you say fire suppression system, you refer to sprinkler system or something like?
Something like that, since they're all attached, so I'm just curious.
Oh, please, so Mr. Azanero will probably get into that a little bit more, maybe there's going to be two-hour fire rating between each unit.
Okay.
Which does not require sprinklers, but you can speak more to that in the code aspect of the building.
Okay, thank you.
Speaking of fire, we did speak with the fire chief and have had, you know, meetings and once again, Mr. Renelli went over, we've had a lot of meetings with the town staff trying to navigate this and making sure we accommodate all the, all the issues before we got in front of this commission. We have identified and done a, what we call an auto turn analysis of bringing a ladder truck to the site to make sure that the truck could circumnavigate through all the roads and the ratings. And I can bring that figure up if you'd care to see it.
That's like, this is a pretty tight quarter for a.
That's assuming no one's parking or there shouldn't be.
Yeah. No, we have, we actually have eliminated all of the parking spaces and those leave from fire lanes where the truck cannot make it. So the spaces that we're accounting for in front of the units can be parked and still accommodate a fire truck.
Good, thank you.
Just give me a moment, I'll find this. So what we do with this program, if I had the program, it would be automated, but basically what these lines show is that, and what we use the fire ladder truck that we custom made for Dutch Coroner's Fire Department, which we confirmed with Kevin Burns, that Chief Burns, that they also have the same fire truck. It may be a slightly, but a different model, but the same, same way. But this does show, you can see, just for instance, this hatched area is where people may park in front and the truck can still get around, you know, and we had to eliminate these spaces because of the turns it would need to make to get access down into this area, to access these buildings. But this, this exhibit shows that it can circumnavigate the entire site, anything, I'm sorry, anything that's hatched is what we would have to. Those units would be recluded from parking in front of their units. It would just be like a fire lane anywhere else. So we would put those, either stripe them or put them in a different, you know, asphalt color. The nice thing about the stamped asphalt is we can use different colors to denote different areas and so that we can identify that those units won't have those. They will have to have their guest park, guest parking areas.
I was going to ask, and just knowing people being people, not everybody's going to pay attention to those markings, you know, people are going to say, oh, park in here to run into the house or whatever. Would a fire truck in that kind of situation be able to get through? Would somebody park in those fire lanes?
The, keep in mind, this is an auto turn software that, that identifies, um, you know, one sweeping movement through the property. I'm sure a truck could back up and make its way through, but we, we, we don't wanna take a chance that, uh, someone has to, you know, back up and do a ten-point turn to get through someplace, uh, in an emergency. So could it, could they get through? Likely. But this shows the worst-case scenario where they should be able to get through. With the, uh, with, as long as these are, are, these, uh, locations are not parked. It's true for any place, someone wants to park in the fire lane, I know, but that becomes an enforcement issue. I understand your concern. Um, we, we met, yeah, we met with the, uh, the fire chief. Um, I believe we've addressed all of his commentary. I'd be happy to get into any of the specifics if there are any concerns. Um, we also went to the police commission. Um, same concerns of density and number of calls that you might see from a place that's dense and, uh, policing it. Um, uh, they also, uh, the police chief had concerns of the ability to, um, walk around the site. It's, it's, it's not very walkable, uh, to state the least. So what we did, uh, to address that is we were gonna, we have added, and it will come up in the landscape presentation, um, some, some pathways in between the units, uh, behind them. Um, so that if people desire not to walk in the roadways, um, they can do so. But I can tell you that many roads in Stonington, most people, they, they don't have, especially small residential developments, don't have sidewalks. People walk in the roadways. Um, so, uh, there are, the, we have provided, you know, a delineator with these aprons, albeit that they're gonna double up, um, for guest parking on a periodic basis. Um, the fire, I believe the police chief also had concerns of making sure we can get ladders. Uh, this is more of something the fire chief, I believe he was gonna speak to about, are getting ladders on the back of the buildings. We can access the front of the buildings with ladder trucks, uh, as, as we've exhibited. But, um, the back of the buildings, um, have about ten feet or more. Um, these buildings are no more, I don't think the highest windows any greater than maybe twenty-five feet, maybe thirty. Um, typical ladder, it, you know, for safety, has to be a one-to, one-to-four base to get a ladder. It's about seven and a half feet. So it's tight, but you can get a ladder on the back of each one of these buildings, as far as safety goes. Uh, it's been commented, uh, you know, about snow removal, especially, uh, the congestion there. Um, we're gonna have to have a snow removal plan. We've been trying to work with the town on that, um, to make sure that we have a robust plan to remove snow from the site. Uh, anything more than a dusting or drifting, it's gonna have to be, uh, shipped off site and brought somewhere else. Uh, there's just, logistically, there's no place to put it on this site. Um, the, also, uh, we've been, uh, dealing with trash removal.
Yeah.
Um, so, uh, trash in, in Stonington, uh, so many, most of the residents knows there's a trash pickup and we intend to use that service here. Um, zoning official commented, we can't put it in dumpsters, but, um, we have spoken to the solid waste manager and to the first select woman and, uh, believe that, uh, we've coordinated with them to make sure that this could be part of trash pickup, similar to, I believe, the Harbor Heights development. Um, trash would have to be kept inside. The garages have space inside to hold the trash receptacles when they're not being put out for a trash pickup. And, uh, through my own experience living in Stonington, trash pickup is put trash out the night before, it gets picked up in the morning and then, um, it's usually, you know, within an hour or so, trash pickup, you're recycling and your trash is picked up. Uh, the, the B units don't have as much interior space, so, uh, we've added some, uh, trash, trash, uh, bins, uh, enclosures to hold trash bins, uh, in the interim, if, you know, uh, so they can be kept, uh, outside but enclosed uh, from the elements and from pests. Um, so.
For each building or for each resident?
Each resident would have, you have a small enclosure outside of their, you know, outside their back door where they could keep their trash receptacles. Um, we did not provide a photometric plan, I just had that actually completed today. Um, photometrics are pretty self-standard, it's, it's pretty standardized. Um, they'll be, uh, Mr. Azanaro will probably go into that a little bit further, but each door will have a canopy above it with some downlighting to, for the entrance to the building. Uh, the garages will have, uh, lights over them, uh, you know, typical type, you know, floodlights. I have specs on those if you'd like to see them. Um, and then the back door, uh, will have a lighting in there. So it's just the minimal needed for safety and security. If it's concerned with lighting, we have to address that.
Sure, uh, curious about the lighting, you know, on the driveways and around. Is there gonna be street lighting in the front, back, anything?
No, all the lighting will be from the buildings.
Okay, especially if, if, there would be lighting in between in the backyard where people drive, you know, in between these two long buildings, I'm kinda curious, is there enough lighting there for people to see?
Behind the buildings?
Yeah.
Between the rows of buildings, that'll be grass.
Grass, okay, but how about the driveways, even in the front of no street, all that lighting would be provided by the buildings on either side?
Yeah, we're, we can accommodate all the lighting that needs for the, for the development.
And that lighting can be controlled by the individual occupants, correct?
By the individuals, there could be motion sensors. I mean, the, this community's gonna need a homeowners association. So I'm assuming that whatever the lighting standards need to be, they might, I don't know if they need to be on all night, but, uh, they can turn off, turn off at night, or maybe there are motion sensors, so that people come in and out. Um, that's, that's something to be, that's something we could, we could discuss and accommodate. I know so many of the streets out in, uh, we started to reference anecdotally, my street, there's a light on, on, on the street. Um, there's gonna be no storage of any tox- toxic or hazardous materials on site. Um, these are all residential homes, so anything they keep in your residential home for, for cleaning products, there shouldn't be anything concerned with respect to the groundwater protection. Um, as far as, uh, you know, hazardous materials. Um, as we mentioned, the wastewater's all being piped off site. The only thing that we really have to be concerned with on the property is the stormwater. I don't need to minimize it, it's an important thing and we, we feel that we're gonna be able to treat it accordingly. Going along in the operation and maintenance, um, trash pickups, no removal. Um, we also need, uh, centralized mailboxes. Potentially, we're gonna be working with the postal service, uh, postmaster on where that could be located and, and a safe location where people can pick up their mail, if it's not gonna be directly, uh, you know, delivered to the door. Uh, there'll be a, a stormwater maintenance, um, plan. And perpetuity, that's something that homeowners association is going to have to, uh, maintain. Uh, the town is not gonna take any type of ownership. At least, the conversations we've had for, for the roads are the stormwaters. I think that, uh, covers most of my presentation. The, uh, plan, your plan has, has, does have commentary. I wasn't gonna go through each one of those at this hearing unless you have specific things that you'd like me to. Um, and the town engineer also has provided us comment, which we have not responded to yet, but we're in the process of doing so. And so if there are specific things, I can address them now. I have read them and we have somewhat of an idea of where, where we're going with them.
Before we get to those, Sergio, um, in your project narrative impact statement from September eighth, page seven, oh, seven, at the top, you say the nearest fifteen-foot supply appears to be the Westley Way located on the east side of the Pawtucket River, approximately blank, near there.
So over a thousand, over a thousand feet. That, um, impact statement is no longer valid though. I, I don't think you should reference it anymore because this is no longer.
I haven't seen?
I'm, I'm sorry.
There's a new one I haven't seen maybe from September eight?
There's an updated narrative until October twenty-fourth. I have a copy of it here if you wanna see it, but I, I'm, I'm pretty fine to answer your question. It's over a thousand feet away to Stonington side of Pawtucket.
Yeah, and groundwater can travel, right?
It certainly can, that's why we're in an offer of protection there.
And how do you maintain the groundwater system that's all on the pavement? You have van wall covers to get down there and?
Correct, yeah.
And how does one know if it's malfunctioning, as you say, you have mechanical?
I'm sorry, what did you say?
You have mechanical helping, you said, you have mechanical, the engineer and you were talking to town engineer, you were discussing ways to process the groundwater, the, uh, stormwater, excuse me?
So the system as it's designed right now is what's called isolator rows.
Right.
So the first flush of the runoff coming off of pavement will, there, there's a, there's a control structure in there, so it makes sure that those are fed first. And those are wrapped in geotextile fabrics.
Mm-hmm.
And so that those can take care of any primary sediment before it goes into the rest of the system. Those have to fill up first.
Right.
Where to get the sediment. Now, those are connected to van walls or catch basins and you can jet those out, jet the sediment into the catch basin and pump it off-site. So that's generally how those work. Um, your town engineer has recommended we put in also what are called hydro, hydrodynamic separators. A little bit difficult in this application, but we're looking to get creative and try to figure out, uh, ways to, uh, bolster the, uh, the stormwater system to, to his, uh, I mean, I think we've done a decent job in improving the site, but considering it isn't the offer, he's going one step further, so we need the additional.
You are improving, I'm sure the stormwater site, you also have awful lot of impervious pavement and rivers and, I mean, it's gonna be a lot of storm.
Yes, it's a, it's a pretty significant, I mean, there's already a lot of pavement there, but we are increasing it.
You must be, yeah.
Correct, yes.
Thank you.
Any other commissioners have questions? Thank you, proceed.
Thank you. What do you want?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning zone board. My name is Paul Azanaro. Um, I've been, um, practicing for forty-two years with experience with multifamily housing and thirty-four years with Azanaro Architects and Associates located in Westford, Rhode Island, as the principal architect. I'd like to go through a little bit of an introduction, uh, get into the two main topics that I'm tasked with and addressing how we've come up with it. Then I'll send you through, uh, what we've done for the buildings to make them work. Okay, so multifamily is not new to me. We started early in the day with, um, with, um, US Department of Housing and Urban Development. At that time, um, the Section Eight housing, um, through HUD was very, um, very, um, active in those days, twenty years spent at least. The Section Eight housing is no longer, um, available, but projects that we've done, let's say twelve, fifteen miles from here would be Canachus, one, two, and three. We've done some scattered site turnkey developments, uh, various projects. We've won, uh, Westley area rest meals. Um, we've also, uh, have refurbished buildings, most of downtown and into Pawtucket from High Street down Railroad Ave, Canal Street, South Broad Street. And the latest one that we dabbled with was the initial master plan for Cogswell Street, initially. Uh, so the, the Connecticut eight thirteen does have its challenges, there's no question. So the project scope is where we really clearly have to listen to the program. And if the overall goal of the project, basically, as I said, it's affordable single-family homes in ownership for the residents of Stonington. Single-family homes in ownership. And this is, oops, definitely criteria that we're giving, given with, you know, that's it. It's a firm program. Now, the budget, um, the budget challenges I have is the overall budgets for the, um, for the developer to carry thirty percent of the units as affordable housing units. That means literally, the cost of the thirty percent affordable housing units has to be absorbed by the market rate net numbers. So, um, all the supportive infrastructure, buildings, drainage, the landscaping, green space, uh, salt costs, it has to fit within the, and the total anticipated cost. So that is another major driver. That is the architect, um, with cost limitations. You need a decent design and a sense of place that works forever remembering the program and our creative skills, our timing a bit, but, um, it doesn't hamper good design or, um, remembering the budget, the budget program. That's what I have to work with. We have developed, uh, two schemes that offer enough diversity and, and recognize, uh, recognizable features that are identifiers in the complex. Where am I? How am I entering? What was recognizable, um, so that people can get to the unit safely. And it's achieved by some of the massing that we did with, you know, the roof shims. It's some of the textures that we've, we've brought into the project, upper, lower, and garage areas. And that, that offers, oop, that offers enough diversity and, uh, recognizable features that are, that we consider identifiers. So I'll go to the three D sections in a moment. Okay, um, so with the sense of place, there's some notable nodes that, um, trying to create maybe neighborhoods within the structures if we would, um, varying massing. And the textures and all that can be further explored with the three-D imaging that we've done and still will, um, fine-tune as we see it all as a whole and how we develop through the project. So this is the site plan we were given. Oops. I'm gonna go back. Okay, so there's some shots of the simple things that we have to work with. Capture the roof massing, uh, given the footprints where they are. Um, I'll get into code compliance stuff in a minute. And you can see by playing with some of the front roofs, we can start creating, um, different areas, basically a high-pitched roof and some of the simplified areas we've been calling colonial form, where as we have off, uh, cables, literally here or there, that makes sense of where we're positioned in the, in the complex. Okay, so elevations. Elevations are pretty, um, simplified, but the three-D imaging was done to really zip it up as much as we can. The floodlands are basic. This is unit type A with a garage level below, a wide enough two-car garage. The floor plans are basic, this is unit type A with a garage level below, a wide enough two-car garage. Below coming up back to the main floor, we have here kitchen, dining room, island, open living room, pretty open in nature. Top floor is the master and two bedrooms, private bath, uh, half bath, I'm sorry, private bath and shared bath full, washer and dryer. This is the accessible units whereby the, uh, bedroom is accessible by the ground floor. And upstairs we have, uh, two more bedrooms. I think, I think that's pretty much it, but I, really the, the gist of what we can offer is definitely the 3D imaging. About we started to offer enough diversity and create a sense of place, remembering the budget and the program. As, uh, the units are basically type A units of twelve hundred seventy square feet, type B units of thirteen, twenty-three square feet, not including the garage areas. This is, um, in compliance with all Connecticut regulations and it does kick us into the one and two family. And there is a two-hour separation and we plan to achieve that from ground floor right up to the underside of the roof. Which is, uh, fire rated plywood, uh, to maintain that two-hour rating. So figuring the SDC, creating sound transmission, it's either one, I'm sorry, it's either one, two-hour wall complete or two one-hours. We're heading towards the two-hour one-wall and various ways to make the sound transmission as high performance as possible. I think normally one and two families, you don't need an architect, but talking with the state building commissioner because of the size of the foundations. A sort of registered architect needs to be involved. And, and again, all the units will be code compliant, like safety, uh, building codes, local, state, federal. And will not result in, with any unsafe applicable, uh, conditions throughout.
I have a question, how often are the two-hour safety walls installed?
How are they installed?
How many, say that North Village is the longest, it's four hundred feet or whatever.
Between every, um, every townhouse, every townhouse, so that there's, um, the exterior, any exterior walls exempt. But every, between every unit, so that particular unit should be central, both levels.
Okay. On the wall, four hundred and fifty feet.
Yeah, well, perpendicular.
Right.
Perpendicular. That's really all I have to offer, I think these will come alive more so once we start. The changing the roof massing and the texture, now that we've developed a 3D model, we'll be exploring that further. But realizing it's gonna be, um, same sort of materials throughout, and I don't want to really throw this thing into a very eclectic thing. Because we can't afford to show the authentication that we see downtown, missing ground all over the, um, we just can't authenticate. What we see here in all is we perceive as law shop, uh, is difficult to choose.
Can I, sir, if I may, I'm looking at the rear elevation here, um, of the, the first units, first townhouse units. It looks like you've made an effort on the front, you know, to kind of make them sort of unique or a little broken up, but in the back it looks honestly like a warehouse. Is there any thought of, of making those, uh, you know, perhaps more personal, I'm thinking of kids going in and out, you know, they're gonna go out back doors.
Yeah, we did, we, we did, but at the end of the day, it was, we did have decks off the back and then that got us closer proximity to across the way and lining up with deck to deck to deck. It was more important to keep that space as open space and play area. But really, having a deck, A, because it's still one and two family, we really don't want barbecues and grills out there. It's just, even though it's one and two families, but overall multifamily, it's not a good idea.
Would you be, would this banning barbecues, would that be something that you would say you could not allow?
What's that?
Barbecues, you mentioned that specifically, would you not allow?
Well, I, I think having it on a, on a deck, a wooden deck, um, is not advisable. But if we did go at a minimum eight-foot deck, eight-foot deck, I think Sergio said that that distance was twelve, twenty feet in between overall. It gives you, doesn't give you much room in that area, four feet in between, literally. Your neighbor, your neighbor, your neighbor, it's, there's no privacy of just literally getting out there.
Wasn't the other question, I would have, to your point with the privacy, should we consider being privacy screening between the, the green areas of each unit? Something to give a little more, you know, personality, perhaps privacy?
Yes, we did, but overall, we need that space for rescue, fire, and, and to have it, um, it's my opinion to put those structures in, it's only to become a nuisance and a hindrance if God forbid we need to get to those areas.
So that leads me to my next question, and looking at the overall plan, I don't see a lot of any kind of space where families could go and have a barbecue and be outside. Because you can't have them, really you don't want them out back, right, is kind of what you're telling me. So I don't see in the plan any kind of open space where the residents could go, you know, have a barbecue or whatever, even a playground for kids. Um, you're having families in here, so you're gonna have children, so where are they gonna go?
Yeah, I, I recognize that, so I, I didn't mean to harshly say no barbecues. I'm just thinking multifamily environment, to put a, a gas burning or charcoal grill on a deck is, 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 is against the law. Against the building codes. And even though this is considered one and two families, I still wouldn't support it. And yet, even if we put a three-foot deck, we're better off recognizing space at grade. Because we do have access directly to grade from the garages and the accessible units, we do have grade right there. But maybe that is best, um, influence, maybe it's a kiddie pool, maybe it's their own little picnic, uh, table. So I think that would be well, well-suited than putting them up, recline to, uh, literally, you can't, five-foot deck out. It's, it's, I don't think it's worth it, better if they're down below and taking some.
I understand what you're saying, sir, because my question or my concern is, okay, people are gonna want them outside and not giving them any place to do that. And you have children there and they're gonna wanna ride their bikes and play and do anything. So if you're not providing any green space somewhere along the property for that to occur, that, would I think would create some problems.
Yeah, we can, we can take a look at dressing up those back areas, but we, as a design, uh, feature one, keep them unencumbered by structures, decks like Paul was referring to. But, but we can take your comment about making men look a little less uniform back, but the area is gonna be open. And so that will be an area that families can gather, if they own that unit, that's gonna be their area as, as part of their designated space. And they can, uh, use it, you know, without having a structure in there, however they, they see fit. And we will also have, there's an area, I don't know if Paul showed on the plan, we can go back to the small area that we've set aside for the HOA to decide how best to utilize it, whether that be a play escape, uh, maybe picnic tables, the kind of things that you mentioned. There will be designated areas over in the back corner of the plant, it's not up, but we can show you. Where, uh, there will be, uh, yeah, that sort of, uh, opportunity, aside from what each person has behind them, meaning for space.
And I guess I still have a part of the concern here, if you're not, people being people, they're gonna expand if they have the room, you know, move their, put their stuff out, back or whatever. If you don't have anything that kind of delineates this is one person, one unit space versus another, then that's gonna happen, it's gonna create problems, people, you know, that's gonna happen.
Well, there, these types of units exist in other towns and, and, and many of them don't have what you're referring to. Uh, but, but, but you're not wrong, I mean, you know, there could be issues between neighbors, that's what the association will work out. And it could be, uh, and we'll look at this between now and next meeting, it could be like you said, maybe put a half fence or something in. Uh, we had, we had decided not to do that and we think that, that we've seen in other towns of a similar type of unit, uh, that people work it out because they know under their, under their, uh, purchase what they're entitled to. But, but I, your comment about the potential friction is a good one, we'll, we'll look at it, maybe there's a way we can demarcate those areas to avoid, uh, avoid that or send a clearer signal where boundaries are. And we can also, I think we have a next plan when we come back and we'll leave a little bit about this area that we're deserving, but we can talk a little more about what that area could accommodate.
And where is that here?
How big is that area?
And where is it?
It's in the weird corner, but what's weird, north side? Why don't I, why don't I, yeah, why don't I introduce Josh Wheeler, our, our licensed landscape architect, that would be out of your cover, he'll show me that part of the landscape.
So basically, there is no designated communal space, correct?
Well, this will be the, the designated space that we're talking about. And yes, other than that, people are out there all individual.
Ten foot square, correct?
Yes.
How you doing? Uh, my name is Josh Wheeler with PL Companies, three fifty-five Research Parkway in Meriden. Um, I'm a licensed landscape architect and I'm going to present the, uh, so the area that we were talking about for the kind of communal area is this area right up on the, the north side. That area is fairly large, we're thinking about that as a potential play escape area, uh, could also accommodate picnic tables. Uh, we're looking at, with, uh, Sergio, kind of regrading the area so it's a little bit flatter, um, and to accommodate kids going out there and playing, throwing the ball around if they wanted to. And that's a part of why I wanted to keep those spaces between the units as clear as possible. Is that if someone did want to kick the ball around, then there's not these structures in the way, uh, to kind of prevent that from happening.
Couldn't you, can you tell, oh, sorry, I'm gonna ask you, describe, how large is that area that you designated? Like how many tables would you fit or what, I mean, I'm trying to think, how many people could actually use it?
What's the square foot of that?
So you're looking at roughly thirty by sixty or seventy for that space?
For a hundred and thirty, means a square yard?
Very small.
And if I may, just out of curiosity, so the way to access that, people would have to walk down the driveways to get to that?
Correct, yes.
Okay, so little kids are gonna be walking down the driveway, people pulling in and out, they don't have a sidewalk where they can be out of the roadway.
Very similar to a lot of the other, uh, neighborhoods, yes. There's also pathways behind the units, so we're proposing a stone dust pathway behind each of the units to accommodate the police commission's comment of having some safe paths between so that the kids aren't walking on the street that they don't have to. Uh, at some point in time, they would definitely have to cross the roadway to get to that area, but that, that would be the case. Uh, we're looking at a bunch of shade trees, some of the things that we're showing are actually within the DOT runway out front, but we didn't want to accommodate some sort of street tree along that edge. Uh, we feel it's really important to help bring the scale of everything down by adding those trees into that area. We know there's power lines out front, so we have to play with distance off the road and off of the power lines. Uh, and we will work with the DOT to get these permitted and put into place. And we have, if you remember back to the utility plan that we had, that obviously had a lot of underground utilities. So what we've done is we've tried to maximize any area that we feel we can put a tree safely without being compromised by the utilities that might be underground or any underground drains, so that's what we've done here with this site. And that's why you can see the, the trees that are kind of stuffed in all around the site, we've, we've tried to bring the scale of these buildings down by adding the shade trees in. We have a mixture of maples and oak trees, they're native and naturalized trees. Some of the trees couldn't necessarily be native based on the size of the tree that we had to choose. So some native plants just couldn't accommodate the space that we had. So we looked at something that's more natural, that's like corneine, uh, things like that. And we also created a buffer along the southern side. An, an, an evergreen buffer along that edge where a butt's the residential zone. On the units that have the, the walkouts and the parking in front, we're able to accommodate some plantings in front of those units as well. So we've added those in and then we're gonna clean up the rest of the space and seed it so that it's nicely clean looking. Okay, that's about all I have on the landscape.
This landscape, does it include any lighting in that public area, the, you know, play area, if you will, do that work?
Well, we haven't looked at that yet because we haven't developed what that space is yet. If the space warranted lighting, we could do that, it could also be done from the buildings that are right adjacent to it.
Any other questions?
Yeah, just two questions, I mean, obviously, uh, the buildings are quite tight in there, um, so one option would be to remove one row to give it more space in line. Um, are you gonna set a certain number of units that makes financial sense? Uh, or, that obviously if there's only one, but it doesn't make sense, or that if you remove one row, would that still be viable for you? Or is it, um, trying to pack in as, as many as possible for?
All right, uh, if I have a similar question, is, could we re, could we reduce the unit count by, for example, eliminating one row of housing?
That's correct.
Yeah, so, uh, the answer is no, um, so as I mentioned, it's sort of market-based statute. The thirty percent of housing is essentially subsidized by the sale of the full market housing. But, um, so to lose that many units would, would, would make the project not feasible and that's another criteria in the statute that has to be economically feasible. And that's why it's a little bit challenging to, uh, for developers and not a lot of developers pursue this, uh, this option. Because, uh, the economics is driven by the need to sell seventy percent of units at a market rate price. And that's what we designed to do, in other words, our goal is not to make housing that, um, the least, uh, the least cost. Because that wouldn't work, we need to, the seventy plus units at market rate have to sell at market price for this to work. So, uh, it's more than you asked, your question was, can we lose it, no, but just because, you know, that, with this scale, if we had hundreds of units, that would be different. But with this scale, there's not enough, serve less if you will, uh, allow for that, um, that, that option.
Okay, yeah, because otherwise you're not making money or profit off of grid state. Yeah, because otherwise you're not making money or profit off of green space. But if, if the whole, if it was built with, you know, year to year, it would not.
It's an amenity. I mean, again, you know, I, I know this is not what you're wishing to see. But for example, I live in New Haven. This is, people raise their kids in places with this much green space. We're not trying to not have green space. There are parks nearby within about a mile of this site. There's a school nearby. And I'm not saying that, that that's the, the solution, but we didn't set out to not have more green space. And green space is an amenity. We recognize that. Parking is an amenity. We want to have something that people can rely. We do think there will be tremendous demand for this. Because the option for a lot of people who are looking for entry-level homes is to rent because there's nothing to buy in this price category. And, and frankly, there are not willing buyers who will say this is a better condition than there are other options. And they're, you know, the, the things they need are here. It's not, again, it's not like a one-way door lock, but we recognize that. And we did try to anticipate some of these needs and address them. And we will respond about that, you know, the sort of unprogrammed space that we've designated. And we can present some options like open play escape, only getting cables to fit, we do accommodate those few things. And when people wanted more space, yeah, they, they would go off-site. There's a lot of beautiful places in Connecticut, public parks, open space, trails. And people do that even when they have large backyards. If there are more questions for our landscape portion, I'd like to introduce our traffic engineer.
Okay, if I, well, actually maybe like you, the question was for the traffic engineer. I was curious on the open space and I read in the report, is there any designated space for school bus pickups? You're gonna have a lot of kids, I would assume, you know, in that someplace where.
Yeah, we, we will, we, we, we aren't showing it, but we know we will probably have a school bus shelter pickup. So, you know, it's like, gosh. So we can show that on another plan, sort of alternative location. We figured we would have to work with the town on where that location would be. And also it might be something we do in conjunction with the centralized mailboxes. Those two areas might be co-located. So we have to sort of triangulate that between the postmaster and town services. But we could, on the next, you know, we'll come back in, show some potential locations. But hopefully, I think we'd want to make sure those work with, for those two other authorities, the postmaster and the. Michael Deion is the principal traffic engineer at BL. And he's going to take through the, the traffic study that he did for the site. And the, you know, the sort of level of service and capacity to retain the traffic, type of traffic that we generate, et cetera.
For the record, Mike Deion with BL Companies, 355 Research Parkway, Meriden, Connecticut. I am a professional engineer, a professional traffic operations engineer. And I did look at the traffic in the area for this project. Specifically focused on commuting traffic in the neighborhood, in this surrounding neighborhood. Did you have a presentation? So what are we looking at with the traffic study and why are we doing it? We're looking at it to see what impact, if any, this, this development will have on the neighborhood streets. And then what we look at is recommending any mitigation if necessary. What we look at too is, you know, we look at several scenarios. We look at no build condition, which is the condition without the site. And the build condition, which is this position with our site. And typically what we look at is the AM commuting hour, which is seven to nine AM. So we know that the traffic is on the way with people going to work. Try not to touch the thing. In the PM peak period, which is four to six PM when most of the commuters are coming home. Towns don't intend to park it up, requires a Saturday analysis too. So we did look at the eleven to one hours for Saturday when most of the traffic is out shopping or going to lunch. What we did for this study is we went out and we took traffic counts at three intersections. And we studied, we wanted to study those. It's, it's more than what a typical traffic study would have done. You'll see later on how much trip generation is going. But we did those AM peak, in PM peak hours, the Saturday peak hours. We did do the counts in July of this year, so the thirteenth and the fifteenth. We also went out and took photographs. We need to go out and verify that the roadway geometry is what's shown. You know, typically if you go out, things could change. We get traffic symbol plans from the states. We want to make sure that what's shown on those plans are actually shown out in the field. And then the DOT actually has historical data out there as well to look at the traffic. So the no build condition, as I said, represents the, the, without the project there. It will include traffic from other developments. We did discuss it with the planner and with the Office of State Traffic Administration. The only thing that's, that's currently approved out there to be built is the hotel that's located north of Route 78. So we actually have accounts from that hotel as well, so we compared them. And this study also doesn't include if the, the restaurant was to reopen. That's something that we, we didn't look at, what we could look at. And it essentially made the trips generated a wash between the residential and the, and the restaurant. The build condition, what we look at there is, you know, we're looking at its vehicle access from two points on Liberty Street. Full access driveways, so you can make lefts and rights out, lefts and rights, lefts in, rights in. And then what we did is we projected those traffic counts we did out to the year 2024. We went to the DOT, the Policy Planning Group, to get a growth factor, what they call it, and just to grow the traffic on a courier basis for what we consider is the year we would hope to be constructing this. And then what we do is we take that traffic and we distribute it and reflect it in our local roadway network so that we can look at our analysis. Part of this for our build conditions is generating traffic for this particular site and how much trips it'll generate. So there is an, an association called ITE, which is the Institute of Transportation Engineers. And they've been collecting data for fifty some odd years on all different land use codes and how much trips they're expected to generate. They actually do have a trip generation code for affordable housing, but there was two studies, so didn't do that. We went the more conservative route and went with single-family attached housing. After we generate that traffic, we distribute it to the network. So we have a no build condition, a new site traffic. Put them together and that's our build condition. As you can see, or can't see, hopefully you will see. You know, for, for a development this size, you're expected in the AM peak hour, a development to have fifty-four trips. Fourteen coming in, forty leaving, PM peak hour sixty-four, with thirty-eight leaving, coming in, twenty-six leaving. And on the Saturday peak hours is seventy-four trips, thirty-six in, thirty-eight out. And as I mentioned, you know, if this restaurant was to be reoccupied, obviously this morning traffic part would be there. I don't know what kind of restaurant it could be, but it might not have morning traffic.
I just made, we're, we're not talking about a restaurant there.
Yep, no, but I'm saying, but the, the existing site, if somebody was to come in and reoccupy that restaurant, it opened it. Okay, there would be trips generated.
I'm a little concerned about what it would be with the housing there outside.
Okay, yep, so that's what we're looking at though.
Just to be clear, or to make sure it wasn't, wasn't something.
Nope, so then like, that's our trips generated. We also, what we like to look at too, for safety reasons, is what they call a site distance out there. There are two different types of site distance. One is called stopping site distance, which is the cars on Liberty Street driving. If somebody turns out in front of them, they have the ability to stop before they hit those cars. There's also intersection site distance. And that's the cars in the driveways for the side streets and for the, the development to take the left and right out. You'll make the decision whether or not to go without hitting anybody. Intersection site distance is more stringent of a criteria, so we looked at both. But since it's, the, the number for intersection site distance is higher, we looked at that. And as Sergio said, we do have, the required is four hundred and fifty feet. We have over five hundred feet in all directions for people who, it's very level out there, flat. And you can see that there's nothing to get in the way of the site traffic. After we took all that data, we put it into a program that we call SANCRO. And what that does is it calculates the delay at every interception. And that delay is, is based on seconds of delay that a car will be expected to sit in the intersection waiting to come out. It signs a letter grade, just like you're in school, A through F, with A being the best, F being failing. Typically DOT accepts level of service D or better on residential streets, on highways, it's level of service D or better. So we looked at, as I mentioned, three intersections along the way plus the site driveways. We looked at Veterans Highway and Liberty Street, just because we had the counts from the previous study with our new counts. We looked at them and compared them and they were very similar to each other, so we were confident in our counts being good. And as you can see, that's a signalized intersection. Can't see it, but everything now is a level of service A and the A on the PM. So everything works good at that intersection during the build and the build condition. Around our site, we looked at Manor Road, the site driveways and Pine Street. Just to make sure that we captured everything on your side. From the graphics here, you can see that the level of service exiting the site, that's the top one. And the third one down, level of service B or C. So C is obviously acceptable to the state, as I said, D or better. And then in the exiting Manor Road and Pine Street, you can see it's a level of service B. Goes down to the level of service C in a couple of locations. PM and Saturday for, well, it's a site driver, but PM for Pine Street and also for Manor Road. But again, it's perfectly acceptable for traffic purposes. So what we're suggesting to the client, and they are obviously incorporate, is to install stop bars and stop signs along the exits to the site. This project does meet the requirement. It will have to go with the Office of State Traffic Administration. So they're going to review the site plans and the traffic. And because they are working and doing driveway work in the state right away, it's also going to need to be approached and permitted. So the district is going to take a look at the traffic as well, as well as the site plans and make sure that everything is acceptable to the state. So two other sets of reviews from the state are going to happen. Any other questions?
I have a couple of questions. Well, the first, I, I just think if this was built as it's currently proposed, you're gonna have a lot of traffic in and out mornings and evenings. And I know especially traffic in there, it's single lane each way, if you recall.
Yes, yes.
Have you thought about or discussing with the state, left turn only lanes or something? You know, if you might have a lot of cars backing up, but they're all trying to get in or get out at the same time.
They, well, they, they can come out, so we looked at the traffic as well, the level of service. The level of service on Liberty Street stays an A. I reported the driveways. So there is, it operates a level of service C, so there's plenty of gaps in traffic to come in and out. So I would anticipate that to be an issue. As I said, if the restaurant was open, it would be the same amount of traffic, at least in the PM and the Saturday.
Okay, based on that, I, I think there's going to be possibly some issue with the traffic here, especially if it does, you know, have a rush hour.
Yeah, and then the state will look at that. There's criteria for installing left turn lanes. And typically it's based upon left turn volume. And we're not going to meet those thresholds typically. But if the state looks at it and asks us to make that, make that determination for them, we will.
And is there any lighting that you were considering as far as putting stop signs there? Is there any lighting on the address? Is there additional lighting, street lighting or property lighting? So folks can see, because they could get dark out there every time, so.
That's, that's something that could be looked at, site plan wise, if we put it on our site. Anything in the state right away, we're gonna have to get permission from the state. Typically, they might allow whatever pedestrian size light, which isn't going to do much.
But it does get dark out there, especially. Those are the questions I had. What's the speed limit out there?
It was down to thirty-five down there, so we're looking at a sight line, we're looking at ten, five to ten miles of.
I don't know, I don't think the study, but if they get traffic, it's developed in itself, any concerns cars in this? Other than we see cars, the cars going fast.
It's, you know, I want to say that it's not a long distance. I know there's quite a few houses in there, so if it's three hundred, four hundred feet, it's, it's harder to get up. Maybe a teenage knucklehead might get up speed going there, but you've got enough turns, you're going to be going slow.
Would it make sense to consider that because you're going to have children?
You could consider speed bumps, I would say, not bumps, so speed bumps might be a better thing. It's easier to maintain a plow.
Thank you. Got any, anything?
Yeah, just a quick question. I, you mentioned that wouldn't adversely affect, or add, you mentioned sort of fish cars in the morning. What was the, what was the current count now?
No, I think forty was in the traffic on Route Two.
Yeah, just, is it a five percent increase? Is it twenty percent? Is it negligible?
Sorry, I'm due to cut it down on paper. So you're testing volumes on Route Two. Got about seven hundred cars, so if we, we'd be. Five to sixty percent? Yeah. So not huge. Again, I know we're not here for a restaurant, but there's a restaurant coming back in there. Just about the same. I'll still be here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think there's two things I want to just add that I, or actually three, I think, but I overlooked. One is housekeeping. I did provide to Clifton when we started the notice, return receipt notices. If you want to, I think those were provided. The other thing is I, I realize I failed to mention what the price point is, the estimated price. So just so you know, sort of the units that are under the statute, the affordable units have to be affordable to families making less than, half of them have to be, less than eighty percent of their median income. And the other half have to be affordable to families making less than sixty percent of the median income. These calculations are all in our, in our affordability plan. But the way that penses out is, so the affordable units at sixty percent will be priced under current conditions at a hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars. And eighty percent units at two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. As you can see, for a three-bedroom home, they're, they're truly affordable. And that is the intent of the statute. Those units will be deed restricted for forty years. So if they change hands during that period, the deed will provide, they have to follow the same pricing formula that we follow here now. That all gets repriced like on the day you get your C O. So under the statute, we provide you, under today's conditions, that interest rates change, et cetera. So that will be updated, but generally that's the ballpark. It's not going to change much because the formula is set. The other thing that I just want to point out, we talked a little bit about existing conditions in the site. Sergio talked about stormwater and protection of the groundwater protection area. The other existing condition factor I believe that we didn't mention is currently there is a septic system on the restaurant. So if I take that off and putting it onto sewer, maybe that will also improve the sort of quality of water discharge from that side. Everything is going to go out to the WBCA, or be treated in a modern system. And Sergio did report, which is in the matter, we can review it. Gives you the conditions for the two-year storm, the five-year storm, the twenty-five-year storm, I think the hundredth or whatever. And, and you'll see that those values at each storm are less in terms of runoff than under current conditions. And the renovation quality of the system is obviously better because even. even the existing conditions, there is no renovation. So just wanted to mention the, mention that. So that's our presentation. You know, we would, obviously, as you said, we're going to hear from the town planner, the public, and if we'd like an opportunity to close, our understanding, so we'll save that, sort of summarize it for the end. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sure. So I'd like to suggest, or actually propose, that we take a five-minute break, because I know then we'll have the town chat comments, and then we'll have the public comments. So five minutes, we can do, actually, let's just call it nine minutes currently, but not a, a little over nine o'clock. May I like to call the inferiority back to order, please? Okay. Thank you, everyone. So the next step in this hearing would be staff report, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In my report, I did go through a series of comments, just on every aspect of this project. The vast majority of them are a complication of both my own comments from the Department of Planning, as well as comments with the rest of staff, in addition to what's already been provided. So just putting it all together. One thing I do want to note at the beginning here is that the applicants mentioned providing an affordability plan. I put in my notes that that wasn't provided, I've received it as of today. So for those interested in seeing that affordability plan, I'll circulate it, and then members of the public as well. I'm going to defer the vast majority of my comments in lieu of hearing from the general public on this, because I think they're going to pull up a lot of the same matters that I've discussed. And then I would just request that after that period, I do have some additional commentary I'd like to share with the commission on the scope of the project and eight thirty G in general, so I'll wait until after that.
Okay. Thank you. So the next item here would be the public comments. So I will just set a few ground rules here, just public comments. I will start with a list of names here, the folks who have signed up. Folks can keep, try to keep their comments for around three minutes, or realize that, you know, it's not going to be an exact science, but if you can, in the interest of time, so that we can give up an opportunity for everyone to speak who has signed up, that would be much appreciated. Also, just to let folks know, when you go up and make your comments, it's not, you're not going to get into a discussion with the project folks. Their comments or rebuttal will come after all the public comments have occurred, so they'll keep a list of whatever concerns you bring up, and they will address them, and that's how we'll proceed. Just also to kind of keep people aware, in the interest of time, we get close to around eleven o'clock, and we still have not gotten from public comments or completed, then we will look to shut the public comments or that phase of it down, so that we can at least look to possibly continue the meeting, to continue hearing part of it to another media P and T meeting. So with that, I will begin, and hopefully I will pronounce people's names close to what they really should be. So the first person I have is Terry Clark.
Mr. Chair, just one second. Some members of the public expressed interest in maybe referring to something that I had up previously.
Okay.
It is accessible, I can facilitate that if need be, but it'll end up to be a distraction, so move it out of the way, or however you want to proceed.
And actually, also, let me just, you can leave that, sorry. Go ahead. And actually, let me ask first, pardon me, sorry, sir, are there any people who want to come up to speak in favor of the project? I don't see anybody listed here, signed up here for in favor. Okay. So against, Terry Clark, the floor, Chair.
Hi, my name is Terry Clark, at eleven Antoinette Street. I'm a licensed professional civil engineer in Connecticut, have about fifteen years in land development in a prior career. So this project's a hundred and thirteen three-bedroom houses, homes. This project is building a neighborhood. We assume just two children per household, there'll be two hundred and twenty-six children here. That's almost four standard school buses full of children. From a report titled, quote, "The Effect of Decreased Physical Activity on Physical and Mental Health of School-Aged Children During COVID-19 Pandemic," from the National Library of Medicine Center for Biotechnology and Foundation, on October twenty-seven, twenty-two, says, quote, "Decreased physical activity in children has been shown to have a negative impact on both physical and mental health in childhood development." As rule of thumb, end quote, "As a rule of thumb, the National Resource Center for Health and Safety in Childcare and Early Education recommends at least seventy-five square feet of total outdoor play area for each child over two years of age using a playground at one time." There's nothing like that in this project. I realize town zoning doesn't stipulate recreation formula or requirements. Perhaps in the future you may. For now, though, looking at these plans, there's no effort to provide any safe play or recreation area here. As children will do what children do, they'll find their own recreation areas. At this site, that means playing on the paved roads in the site, which is described by the developer as travelway and parking space. This is an unsafe condition. Or playing in the three-hundred-foot-long grass strip between the center rows of units, which has no recreational amenities, and its access/escape route is only at the end of each building, around three hundred feet apart. There's no quick access to an injured or cornered child. This is an unsafe condition. There's some grass along Route Two, the children may choose to investigate it, clearly an unsafe condition. I understand there was a possible discussion about obtaining additional land along the state roadway, I don't know where that ended up. That might make it even more of an attraction for kids to congregate, but it certainly won't make it safer. Activities going on there may become an attractive nuisance for motorists, which is another unsafe condition. There's a wooded area behind the site, which is somewhat known to be a refuge for homeless people. Not that just being homeless makes one unsafe, but I think most parents rather their children didn't venture too far without woods. I understand that an idea was floated, I didn't hear anything about it tonight, but to consider the nearby schoolyard to be counted as recreation slash open space for the project. I don't know if that's still in discussion. That has broad implications, notably changing it to a town, the school playground to a town-owned, twenty-four-hour, unmonitored public playground, which the town owns, maintains, and ensures for private HOA. It's a precedent that every future developer would reflect into their also. Perhaps the town could build a gazebo there. I know the application states there will be no impact to the school system in the developed restaurant waiver of a school impact study, but that should be the decision of the school board, whether more buses, more meals, more teachers, support staff, and equipment is needed. It seems likely that there will be an impact, maybe some safety concerns, and the question should be at what cost it is to mitigate the impacts. An important safety feature of a project like this is that safety vehicles can access the site at all times. The ability of fire apparatus to maneuver above the site has been discussed. The engineer used a computer program to simulate what maneuvering is possible. Resulting map shows the fire department vehicle exceeding the roadway for some maneuvers. Also, the design may not have used the actual equipment the town owns. The plan shows it used the same truck as Dunn's Corner. I don't know whether Stonington uses the same truck as Dunn's Corner, maybe they do, but nowhere on the plan does it state that a Stonington fire truck can maneuver the site. The engineer should remove references to Dunn's Corner truck and state on the plan what fire vehicles the town of Stonington owns, and which of those vehicles can maneuver through the site and which ones can't. It also appears the engineer allowed for other cars on the road in that analysis. We were told residents and visitors park in that area. Was there consideration in the simulation that there might be more than one emergency vehicle responding to the site? We've all seen the emergency response, police, ambulance, fire trucks, many of them, they don't park between the lines or travel in single, single rows. It's a site they figure they'll have to drive through in single file. I've heard that fire department supervisor said the layout will work. I do not disparage or doubt that the fire department supervisor has knowledge and experience to sign off on behalf of the town of Stonington. And I believe that our emergency responders have the drive-in fortitude to get their work done, no matter what's in the way, but we owe them our best efforts to make sure that the design is safe for them. It's 2023, an engineer can run computer simulation of different vehicles and scenarios on built site. The planning commission and the public should be able to see a complete Stonington-specific emergency access evaluation before stating this layout is safe. It's known that the site is over in Aquifer, that the stormwater management system is supposed to be designed to protect the Aquifer. The site's using storm tech chambers on the roadway for stormwater management. Storm tech chambers only attenuate the stormwater volume. Now, I understand he's using isolator rows. That's something new I'm not familiar, not familiar with, but it appears they may remove T S S, but there's no, nothing there that's going to remove any oil or hydrocarbon pollutants. So pollutants that would just infiltrate through into the Aquifer, doesn't look like they would want for the leisure. So this, the site will have a lot of H O A fees to cover the proper maintenance of this site. There's landscape maintenance, snow removal, stormwater management system maintenance, drainage sewer, which might require bond, building maintenance, insurance, hopefully street lighting. If those fees apply to affordable units, and if so, is that fee included in the affordable maximum for the unit? I know if I was, if it was my starter home cubicle, I would want to be required to pay off somebody else's H O A fees.
Sir, if I may ask, Terry, coming close to the end of the comments, I'd give you a little extra time.
Yeah, a couple minutes, yep. Thank you. So H O As are also not too difficult to dissolve, and affordable housing owners and starting unit families may have other priorities than maintaining a stripped-down site for a hundred and twelve other families. So the viability of this project has been brought up several times in the context of the need to pack the site with way more than this site can reasonably support in order to make it profitable. The eight thirty G law is not the cause of that need. If the viability of this project is dependent on eliminating all site amenities in green state pace, it sounds possible that we'll end up looking at something less than expected. I've just listed several safety issues that show this plan creates an unsafe environment. Safety issues are the one reason you should, not may, but should deny the eight thirty G, which you proposed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great to be here, Lord Lieutenant. Thank you for letting us speak tonight. I'm Terry Clark. I live at eleven Antoinette Street in Pawtucket. I've attended many meetings regarding this project. These meetings included four different commissions. At every meeting, there was a common concern, safety. But at every meeting, someone made the comment, but it's an eight thirty G project, and if we don't prove it, the town will be sued, and it will cost the town money. I'm compelled to ask these questions. If this project is approved, and the Aquifer is polluted, what cost would a class action suit for multiple towns across the town of Stonington? If a child is playing either around this property or in the vicinity of it and is harmed, this child will suffer the trauma of that event for years to come. How do you compare what a lawsuit would cost the town to the possible irreversible damage to a child and a family? If a fireman suffers an accident running around the building, carrying the ladder, and breathing apparatus because a truck won't fit behind the building, how do you compare what a lawsuit would cost the town to keeping our volunteer fireman safe? If our police are responding to multiple calls at this housing project, and one of them is injured during that call, how do you compare what a lawsuit would cost the town to keeping our policemen safe? I firmly believe that any cost is worth denying this developer the opportunity to build an unsafe nightmare in our town. If there is any possibility of any harm done to the Aquifer or any human being, that denying this project, even if the town of Stonington is sued, is the right and responsible choice. The town owes it to its citizens to do everything in its power to keep them safe. I'm also really happy to see all the citizens come out and voice their concerns on this project, even after the developer only sent a butter notice to properties within a hundred feet. In my opinion, all of the neighborhoods that this project would affect should have been notified, even if it were to go above and beyond, it would have been required. That would have been in the best interests of this town and its citizens. Thank you for letting us speak.
Thank you very much. Next person is Deborah Downey.
My name is Deborah Downey. I reside at five Back Acres Williams, Stonington. These comments are an abbreviated version of a letter that I sent the town planner today, and I hope you'll have a chance to read. I'm speaking as a resident and not on behalf of the Board of Lords. But I'm also speaking as a groundwater scientist. I have a master's degree in hypergeology and over thirty-five years of working as a hypergeologist, environmental consultant, and Connecticut license environmental professional. I also spent fourteen years on the Stonington Leavitts Commission and served on the stormwater task force. I support housing that's affordable, but I cannot support this project as proposed. The development strives for maximum density of units without consideration of public safety, quality of life, or protection of our water supply. During my detailed review of the project plans and meetings with town staff, I identified several public health and safety issues, one of which I'm going to address tonight. The proposed development is located above the Pawtucket Aquifer, which is the only source of drinking water for more than fifty percent of the Westerly and Pawtucket area. To help protect this resource, the town of Westerly applied for and received U S E P A designation as a sole-source aquifer. The EPA determined that this aquifer, which includes portions of two states, is the sole or principal drinking water source for the area, and because there are no reasonably available alternative water supplies, if the aquifer were to become contaminated, it would create a significant hazard to public health. Not only is this development located within the sole-source aquifer, but it's in a portion of the aquifer mapped as a groundwater reservoir, recharged area, and wellhead protection area for the White Rock well field, which provides seventy percent of the daily water supply for Westerly Water, and is located sixteen hundred feet from the property. Groundwater reservoirs are the portion of the aquifer that contain the highest potential yield of drinking water. Ret charged areas are the surface lands that drain to that reservoir, and wellhead protection areas are those parts of the aquifer through which groundwater moves into a well. In these areas, pollutants that enter groundwater can easily reach a pumping well. All these areas need the highest levels of protection. This development is nearly a hundred percent impervious and will generate a significant amount of stormwater runoff. Runoff contains heavy metals like copper, lead, zinc, mercury, cadmium, chromium, and nickel, from vehicle exhaust residue, corrosion, and degradation of brakes. Runoff also contains petroleum compounds from vehicles, and polyameric hydrocarbons from asphals and sealers, some of these compounds are carcinogenic, as well as phosphates, nitrates, chlorides, and bacteria, especially from pad waste. When properly designed to maintain, stormwater treatment systems can remove some of these pollutants by filtration, but mostly by filtration by vegetation and absorption on soil particles. Stormwater that's infiltrated or discharged to the groundwater without act of treatment can contaminate a water supply. Per C T D E P guidance, in aquifer protection areas, stormwater runoff from paved surfaces should ideally be directed to above-ground systems, which allow maximum infiltration and treatment by soil or vegetation, and better control and remediation of spills. The subsurface infiltration system proposed at this site is not recommended in areas of shallow groundwater, because it needs a three-to-five-foot minimum separation between base of the system and the water table to prevent groundwater contamination. In the reports, I found test pits completed, which were completed at the site in late June and encountered groundwater at depths ranging from less than one foot to nine feet below ground. Late June is the time of the year when the water table is at its seasonal lowest. The water table is typically higher in late winter or spring. That's a seasonal high water table. Based on the site data, I question whether there's enough separation from the base of the system to the water table to allow adequate removal of pollutants. The system design also assumes that the site soils are suitable for infiltration, but I could find, I could not find in the reports any curb tests or slug tests that measured the actual infiltration rates at the site. Site documents also didn't include details on de-watering, removal of unsuitable fill or a blasting plan to address the shallow and exposed bedrock on the southern portion of the property. The proposed stormwater treatment system is located entirely beneath the roadway. Based on this design, the town is not expected to accept this roadway on the town's system. If the town doesn't accept the roadway, maintenance, inspections, and cleaning, as well as plumbing and snow removal, become the responsibility of the homeowner's association. And in my experience, homeowners' associations do not generally have the capacity, management, or finances to manage and pay for this work. If the system is not maintained and clean, there could be catastrophic failure, backup of the system flooding buildings and roads, and contamination of the Aquifer. There will also be associated premium costs to tear up the roadway, repair the system, and restore the water, and these costs could unfairly end up falling on the town and the taxpayers. Finally, although not a regulatory requirement, the stormwater system is designed to be per current conditions and does not anticipate predicted increase in extreme precipitation events. We're already seeing these more intense, more frequent rainstorms. Why wouldn't we want to plan for these, especially in the sensitive Aquifer area? Finally, in summary, this proposed design has the real potential to impact our water supply. Industrial contamination has already reduced the size of the sole-source aquifer in Westerly and Pocatuck, resulting in the abandonment of one wellfield. Southern portions of the Aquifer are threatened by saltwater intrusion. CTD has asked municipalities to adopt and enforce land use restrictions to minimize contaminant threats to our aquifers. We should be protecting our water supply and not sacrificing it to an overly dense development. Thank you.
Next person to speak, Ryan Kalte. I don't pronounce that properly. Do you?
Hi, everyone. Ryan Kalte, 20th Old Gardens. Last are great. I don't have that type of articulation written down, but there are a few concerns we do have going over this. First and foremost, 30 to 40 units at affordable housing and the rest at, what was it, 290, I think he said, came to $28 million for all the units sold in a perfect world. That's if they sold 40 and the other seven. It's just, I'm not a developer. That just seems like an insane amount of money to have this put there, and it's just huge. I mean, it's all jammed in there. It's all packed in there. These guys are going to be using words like scaled down, jammed in. I think they even think they know it's too big. I don't think we'd be having this conversation at all if this was just 65 units. One of the main concerns I have is, oh, this is on the screen. He's got it. Oh, right, right. It's on now. So I quite literally live, oh, there we go. So I quite literally live very top of the screen, the bigger box right there by 78. All right, now, I know we were talking about traffic before. That's where the two lanes turn to one, and the traffic is nuts. My house is literally right there, and people zooming in and out, accidents all the time. I appreciate the traffic report, but nobody brought in beach traffic. There wasn't one talking beach traffic, all right? Since the start of Waze and Google Maps, nobody really takes 78 anymore. And numerous days I come into work, you come right down here, sometimes the traffic's already back up to grounds. And it's, it's nuts. With this going in here, I think it's going to make it worse. And then on top of that, we have conversations of another development where the Stonington movie theaters are. Is that correct? Am I correct on that at all?
I mean, next month.
Yep. There's the, the Hotel Alhines Tractor Supply Store. There's talks of La Quinta expanding as well. Route 2 is just going to become a danger zone. It already is. I mean, how many accidents we have at the end of 78? Now we have this with all the, more traffic coming out of here. And like I said, I don't think we'd be having this conversation about this whole unit if it was, say, 65 units, which would cut in half to 14 million. I'm not a developer, but 14 million sounds great. Not great, so. A few other things that were brought up. Is there a fence around this property? I don't think anybody said, is there any fencing going around here? Did you know? Did you know? Right. To answer the question about kids playing, they're going to end up in the trail. They're, they're going to end up in the trail, just like everybody else. They're going to end up in the trail right behind our house. We all know what the trail is because there was quite literally just a manhunt on Wednesday for a gentleman that involves pretty much the whole police department looking for somebody. That's where the kids are going to end up, right back there. My main concern, the water report's fantastic, but my main, my main concern is crime-related traffic, all right? I, I, I know it'd be naive for anybody to stay up here and think that something's not going to go there. We know something's going to go there. We know something's going to happen at that location at some point. But 113 units, the parking inside that unit, they're going to end up on the streets, they're going to end up down the hard road on police. Even you were talking before, it sounded like you even knew that the parking seemed like there's going to be an issue in here. It needs to be fixed. Something needs to be done. It's just too large, I think, for, for what we have coming in here. So that's our case, all right? I appreciate it. Thanks, guys. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Linda Lussey, 27th Avenue Street. I really don't have a lot to add. Mr. and Mrs. Clark, David Downey, David, wonderful job. I don't have much to add. I too was concerned about the drainage from the development, and I'm concerned about they mentioned blasting, and I was concerned about if there is blasting, who's going to take care of damage to winning properties, which gets the idol. I live on Avenue Street, and just when they had the accident of someone in a homeless tent, their gas tank exploding, I could feel the work down, down my street. So I'm concerned no any blasting that has to be done. I'm concerned about not having green space added and everything going right to the property lines. I really don't have a lot to say. I don't have any judgment for, for housing, but I do think this is forward extending for this property. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person, Julie McNeil.
Good evening. My name's Julie McNeil. I live at 21 Police Avenue. And as Linda also said, that everyone seemed to bring all the, the issues more eloquently than I'll be able to, but being that I live so close to where this is going on, again, I have nothing against affordable housing or development, but the size of this is just insane. I'm sorry. You're talking about 10 feet of green space behind units that are right up against the border of the property. No one did talk about a fence around the entire property, so the kids aren't going to be going back into the woods, which I think is, is a must. It's a little bit dangerous to let them get back there. And then, and the traffic, I mean, I need to do all the studies I want, but you're sitting at the end of Police Avenue trying to get out. The traffic coming from 78 direction, they are going 45, 55, 60 miles an hour to jockey for position who's going to get into the single lane where all funnels down. It's, it's just with more traffic trying to get in and out, I think it's going to be disastrous. I guess that's all I really wanted to add. I do think the safety of the children, of the people in there driving up and down the roads, and most of all, our aquifer. Thank you.
Next person is Ally Duralo. Pronouncing that right.
It's Duralo. So my name is Ally Duralo, and I live on 23 Russell Avenue, which is an offshoot of Glasgow. So this proposal is in my neighborhood of importance to me. However, the traffic study somehow did not address our streets, Glasgow, Russell, Russell, or Police, which is impossible to get in and out. I have a tremendous number of issues with this proposal. Most have been outlined in the meeting summary court. I must add that earlier it was discussed about one fire truck getting in. With the diagram they showed, I have never seen in Pocatuck or Stonington, one fire truck respond to anything. It's EMTs, it's police, it's multiple fire trucks, it's fire trucks from Westerly coming in. It is unbelievable. I don't know where they think they're going to park all those. Are we paying people on Liberty Street? Is that what we're doing? We're asking police officers to line up Liberty Street and then run in? But the number one safety issue, I keep returning to this, is that this dense housing sits on the Pocatuck Aquifer. This is the same aquifer that the federal government named the very first, very first sole aquifer in 1988 because of the amount of people who depend on the water from it. In fact, a report at the time, the Pocatuck Aquifer was labeled unique because it provided drinking water to over a dozen towns in two states, or also now crossing state boundaries. The concern is not a new topic by any means. I personally sat in front of various commissions and heard them speaking regarding this. Yet, time and time again, Fair Housing Connecticut LLC has not made one revision to address this federally protected natural, natural resource. In fact, they consistently push back to say that they can't add green space nor remove one property from the proposal due to money constraints. What good is housing if we don't have quality water for the current residents, the future residents, and the multiple farms in our area that provide us with food? Isn't that a concern that is bigger than housing? I think so. In fact, the Connecticut Superior Court also thinks so. My husband, who is a lawyer, who has been providing information to you about a case law that states how protecting the Pootituck Aquifer, which is the only other sole-source aquifer in Connecticut, is a more substantial public interest than affordable housing. Thank you.
Tom Duralo?
Good evening. My name is Tom Duralo. I have a terrific client. Pretty girl I ever saw. I live in 23 Russell, right near this project. A little bit of background about me. I am a trial attorney. I've worked on cases in 42 states, and I'm the owner of a mid-sized law firm based out of Philadelphia. This stuff I feel comfortable with. And what I decided to do tonight was come talk to you a little bit about the law. When I argue a case before a jury, one of the things we do in closing is give them permission, and the permission that we give them comes in the form of jury instructions. How does the evidence match up with the instructions that the judge is going to give? And I wanted to raise those issues for tonight. I even brought super exciting case law for you to read in your spare time and to talk about with your family. But I'd like to read you a couple excerpts. Name of the case, Springfield 2000 Homes Corporation versus Town and New Town Zoning Plan. Really important standards in denying an affordable housing application. The commission, meaning you folks, planning and zoning, identified the purity of the town's water supply as a substantial public interest which must be protected. It's in the court opinion. On the record in this case, it is hard to imagine a more substantial public interest than protection of a sole-source water supply. I have to pause there for a second. A lot of times when you're making an argument in a courtroom and you're looking for case law, you don't quite get it right. You've got to make an analogy of some type. I don't have to do that here. And I would do it. It's not difficult. Not difficult at all. This one concerned the Pootituck Aquifer, which I think is not nearly as substantial at the moment we're dealing with here today. Expert testimony is not necessary to persuade a board of laypersons that untreated sewage, which infiltrates the water supply, will contaminate the water. The good news is, we actually had the expert. She was terrific. Debbie was here. She just gave you a master class, and now you're going to have a glass of cadmium for breakfast tomorrow. That was important. That was your expert. That's the permission you needed to make the decision you got to make. This isn't hard. The end of this opinion, and I'm going to leave it here for copies for you. Rather, it emphatically resolved that the necessity to protect the water supply for its residents clearly outweighed the need for affordable housing. That one was easy. I'd like to raise a separate legal concern, and I think it's really important. It's been hinted at tonight. This aquifer crosses state lines. The class action that was wisely referenced earlier that's coming down the pike could actually be coming from a group of towns who are also receiving the same water that gets contaminated. I can't imagine if there's not some federal jurisdictional issues here that have not been considered, studied, and gone over. I find that hard to believe. I'm a relatively new resident of this area, and it makes me think that there's some relaxation because of the warm relationship between Stonington and Westerly that we forget that you're actually crossing a legal boundary that really matters. Someday, somebody's going to raise that issue again, and you're going to remember it, because we talked about it tonight. Finally, raising the, the safety issues here, and being before a lot of juries, a lot of courtrooms, and a lot of places, this was not comfortable to sit through, and everybody here knows it. There was objective signs of it. The witnesses had to be yanked off the stand, and we could all see it, and so could you. The questions were not answered well, specific to safety issues here. The single best witness up here tonight was Debbie. She was terrific. Don't lose sight of the expertise that she brought to you and what this case gives you the permission to do. Thank you for your time tonight.
I don't know how I follow, I don't know how I follow that. I will give kudos to the, to the folks that proposed this. They probably shut themselves in the foot very well tonight. I'll go directly to the Aquifer. Well, a little bit about me. I, I'm a third generation, 13 Murray Avenue, across the street. My daughter who followed me owns a greenhouse that borders right on, right on the Rosalini property. Little history, Rosalini's was a wooden building, small Italian restaurant in the '60s. My neighbor would walk there too as a waitress. It evolved into, eventually evolved into, and there was a Little League ballpark. Part of Little League ballpark is directly across the street from the Italian club. It got moved, and then 78 came in because of traffic, and it got moved a third time. As far as the, as far as the Aquifer, my recollection, as, like I said, my, my parents lived there from the, probably in the late 50s, late, early 50s, I guess, and I, I've lived there. My daughter lives there. She's raising her children there, so we're a third generation. There was a spill at one time. It was called Blanchard's Corners. If you went up a little farther, Route 2, the road split to 49, there was a gas station. They closed a well. My uncle, who lived in Westerly, was a worker at the pump stations. And two of the wells were closed for a good long time. And it wasn't a giant spill, but you know, maybe a nozzle hit the road and the gasoline traveled fast in the water and it was in that well and well was closed. And I guess that's probably the biggest concern that I would have. I agree with everyone else on drinking water. Some of the bullet points I would have, you know, he said people walk in the road. Yes, they do, but they don't walk in 131 units so congested. I believe there's probably more, more units there, 131 units than there are houses on Murray Avenue, Manor Road, Line Street, Rossie Avenue, Russell Avenue. All those streets probably don't have 131 units and not all of them. Let's see. I took notes as you were going. One of the gentlemen, budget, budget, budget. That was all we heard. And then this gentleman came up to rescue him. It was, we can't afford to get rid of a unit. I agree with the previous speakers that if it were smaller in scale, it might be more acceptable. It is too large. You are not going to get it close to the architecture of the houses in the neighborhood. It's clear the space is too small. Traffic study was done in July. The school starts in September. Maybe they shouldn't have done it in September when there was more traffic. I wish there was a better use for that particular property, but I don't think putting these houses there, and they call them houses. They're not houses. They're apartments. You're putting in, you know, condos, apartments, what have you. I just think it's too small and the risk for the water pollution is too great.
Thank you. Appreciate you. Next person, Amy Mesh. Did I get that wrong?
Good evening. Amy Mesh.
No, okay.
So, as my father previously stated, I own the property at 195 Liberty Street. So, if you were facing now Rosalini's and you look to the right, we are the first house there. I purchased it in 2006. My husband and I lived there for years until we had our first child and decided we did not want to raise a child on this busy street. We want to allow our kids to run and play. So, we purchased another house and we currently rent this one. As I said, speaking from somebody having children in this area, it's not safe as is without the added congestion. The traffic study, it was mentioned, was done in July. Okay? It didn't take in the hours of beach traffic and also the school pickup and drop off. I drop my son off at Westline School every single morning. I drive past there and the road comes to the merge that we've talked about, the bus stops there. It gets congested and that's not taken into effect. So, I'll take it to it again. September, beach traffic and whatnot, see how it makes out. My other concern is, it was mentioned that maybe the school can be our green area. It can't. It's completely fenced in. Why I love Westline Street School is because it's completely fenced in. People can't get to it from the outside. Our children are safe back there. Having more people that are in the wooded area, you know, they're going to be exploring back there. I know my children, we go, we work on the house, they go back and they're like, oh, I can see my school. Like, they love to go play in the woods. Kids are inquisitive. They're going to be doing the same thing. They're going to be looking around back there and it's just not an area for kids. So, again, I agree with everybody. Affordable housing, okay, but just not this area. We need to find a better area in our area. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person is Mike Thomas.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I would draw my time. Everything I was going to say is already been said.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. The next person is Nick Verzillo.
So, my name is Nick Verzillo and I've been a resident of Parkettuck for about 55 years, originally from Westerly. I'm familiar with some of the streeters that were here. I couldn't disagree with them more. Some of the stuff I'm going to say has been said, but I'm going to say it in my terms. Where's the common sense? There is none. This development is a catastrophe waiting to happen. So, that being said, the thought process really is not going into the development. The developer has no personal interest in this town, neither does the presentation partners. They have no interest. They didn't want to get it done. I've been in the building business, in the development business for over 50 years. I've done three communities in the town of Augustville. One of them received national recognition for the way it was done. So, for me knowing what I have done in my lifetime and seeing what they're proposing here, it infuriates me. I didn't have much time to prepare for this because I was not notified because it didn't matter. Town people did not matter. Traffic, I live on Manor Street. It's not Manor Road. It's Manor Street. Sometimes it takes two to three minutes just to make a left-hand turn out of Manor Street. Traffic study? That traffic study may have been done in July, but I think the traffic study was done very well. Like I said, two to three minutes to get out of that street. And over past, I would say 10 years, I've seen at least three accidents just coming out of that street by itself. One of the accidents even hit a house on Liberty Street, Group 2. Like I said, you have to bear with me because tonight was the only preparation I've had. When I first saw the aerial view of this development, the first thought I had in my mind was, I hired some kids at the Boat Tech to see how many squares they could put on a piece of paper because that's what it looked like to me. Today was the first time I've seen the actual formal plans. It's not any better. Now, the town would be responsible for snow removal. Well, our town trucks cannot navigate or remove snow in this so-called development. They don't have to get either a special truck or go in with a backup. I don't think that this town needs to spend money so that they can make money. That's the foolish, most foolish thing. We all want some affordable housing. This is not the right answer at all. Safety? I know it's not supposed to be talking about safety, but what common sense development doesn't have safety above? Just because they're hiding behind the wall and they can avoid zoning regulations and everything else that everybody in this town has to abide by? It's not right that they can just ignore it. Fire separation? That's so ridiculous. That is kid's stuff. A fire truck can only go on one side of the house and then they have to move over the top or one latticet in the other side. That's total insanity. Also, there should be, if they were to pass this somehow, there should be fire separation on the backside of these units because they're within, what, 15 feet of the other units? So, this is, this development certainly is not good for the town. They need help from the town so that they can make money and create problems for future, for the future of this town. And it's going to be nothing but problems. Common sense tells you that. I beg this commission to flat-out turn down this development and I guarantee you, everybody in this room and the other probably 100 people that didn't get notification or are on vacation because of this meeting, this meeting or this date was by no accident, they would back this town. No one wants it. And I can guarantee you, there's other parts of the town who wouldn't have want to see this. So, I beg you to just flat-out deny it. Thank you.
Thank you. I apologize for the next person's name. It's not difficult. Joel?
Gordon.
It's Joel Gordon from 11 Manor Street. And I just want to address the traffic. I come home from work every day between 3 o'clock and 5 o'clock in the afternoon and going from the 45 to the 35, or 35 to the 25, whatever it is. Every day, it's danger. There's not a day I get people yelling at me. All I want to do is take a right into my neighborhood. Sometimes I look in my rearview, take my blinker off, go down, turn around in the motor station, come back and try again because I can't turn down my road because there's so many people flying down that street behind me. Come back, try again, maybe not, you know, go back, try again, and then go to traffic supply and try to get out of there. Impossible also. I would hate to see the extra people in the area. That's all I got to say about it.
Thank you. Next person, can't be the first, I'm the last. It's like Chesey. Does that sound appropriate?
John, for charity, I live at 47 Russell. I was just concerned about the aquifer too. It just boggles my mind that they would even consider building this on an aquifer. You're just asking for trouble. And if, when it does contaminate the aquifer, who's responsible? Is it the homeowners? Is it the developer? Is it the town of Stonington? Or is it, you know, whoever? You guys? Who's responsible for when I can't drink my water? And one thing struck me funny, the two-car garages under the units. I don't know if anybody who uses a garage and parks two cars in there, they have storage mostly and they park their cars somewhere else.
Thank you. Next person is Helen Van Kowsky. General comments.
My name is Helen Van Kowsky and I live at 430 River Road in Parkettuck. And I just happened to notice a post on Facebook, I think it was on the Parkettuck Community Forum, that this application involved an aquifer. And I remember talking to Rick Davis, who was my neighbor, the late Rick Davis, from the Davis Farm on Green Haven Road. And he was very concerned about this aquifer. And he just reminded me that it's really important to take care of it. So, my concern, I mean, I sympathize with the neighbors because they just seem like a really dense project and their traffic concerns and all that. But a lot of wells evidently are affected by, could be affected by this, or get their water from this aquifer. And I am well and I'm concerned about that. And I really appreciated hearing the groundwater scientist because when I signed up to this comment, I wasn't sure what I was going to say, but she was so informative and so knowledgeable about the importance of this sensitive, sensitive, important aquifer that, you know, I had checked the, just not for or against, but just I wanted to comment about the aquifer. But having heard her, you know, I really would have to say I'm against this proposal because of the potential damage to the aquifer. So, thank you.
Thank you. Michael Murphy.
Michael Murphy, 1 Glasgow Road. A lot of the concerns I have been had tonight, a lot of safety concerns that everything's going to be dumped on homeowners association as far as snow removal, maintenance, keeping everything up. It's a lot of responsibility. Who knows how that management's going to be? Biggest concern I have, and anybody in this room that lived there in the 80s, one gentleman talked about it, a gasoline leak was a major problem. We all think back to going to the water loopholes with National Guard, feeling that by jugs. Anything like that over an aquifer could be dangerous and it should be looked at in much more depth than it is right now. And that's basically all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm not sure if I'm reading correctly. Should I read? Okay. Next person, Seth McGaddens.
Just going to go real quick. This project, it's way too many aspects of it that are cause for concern. They create abuse, they are lacking, unresolved. Just include, but they're not limited to, recent fire concerns, decked aquifer concerns. New property and adjacent owner safety includes sufficient traffic light, sidewalks, pedestrian access, et cetera. We didn't discuss the impacts of potential light pollution to adjacent properties from this property. School and bus capacity concerns, inadequate snow management plan concerns, which will translate into life safety issues when fire trucks and emergency vehicles can't access the site because a snow removal hasn't happened. The traffic study, I was really concerned with because I live at 28 Russell Avenue and though Glasgow and Police were completely ignored in that traffic study and it's a very difficult area to get in and out of on a daily basis. In addition, there's trash and sanitation concerns, extremely limited green space, playground area concerns. And I have my, I'm not a code expert, but I have my reservations about structures of this size not being fire suppressed. To me, it just seems common sense for a project to this size. I don't know. I guess I'm not a code expert, but providing fire separation with fire, actually the problem just in my head just doesn't make any sense. Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Helen Gray.
I don't really have a lot to say. Pretty much everyone has said just everything, but I don't, I probably would have hoped to have said more eloquently. I just want to say I don't against the idea. I do not understand, just not understanding why it can't be a smaller project. I live at 13 Police, which is directly next door. In the morning, it is very hard to just get out of there. It takes several minutes. My daughter catches the school bus in the morning on our side. There's several other children across the street that are getting on. They have to cross the street. So, I'm just trying to imagine, and then when she comes home, she has to cross the street and she'll be waiting there. I'll see her waiting there as cars are coming by so that she can cross. I'm trying to imagine how many children are going to be coming out of this proposal. It's 113 proposed units. Like, what's the full situation going to look like? I just can't even imagine how we're going to maintain this. I don't understand why this cannot be at least in half or why that's not possible. What is it? Why is it that it's like, no, we will not consider that? What does that mean? Why will they not consider that? On top of them saying that this affordable housing is going to be an HOI, I don't understand that because now you're saying, so now this affordable, this affordable housing, now they're going to be putting money in. It's not going to be their own homes because they could lose it if they don't maintain this, that, or the other. They're going to be responsible for running all this. So, what is, what is this? Like, I don't even understand how this is affordable housing and how it's comfortable for children. I don't see how this is kid-friendly. I'm just not sure who's pro. They inherit, it's not our town, it's not our kids. I'm sorry. I don't know what else to say. I'm not even going to doubt, I'm not a desperate, I'm groundwater, but it's appalling, all the things that I'm hearing. Contaminants and what's this going to be doing to this around here. This is just blowing my mind. If they can't put this in half, I think this whole idea needs to be thrown out. Something else needs to be reconsidered, considered for this area. And maybe it's to be affordable housing somewhere that can maintain it because if we're in right there, maybe it was catastrophic. and friendly to our community, and our community could support it. I'm just not sure about the traffic. There's no light there. There's literally two skinny little lanes right there. How are people going to pull up in the morning for work? Out of one hundred and thirteen units at seven to nine in the morning, there are going to be like fifty cars coming out to go to work? Like, are they all even aligned there? Like, how is this even... I don't even know. I don't understand the whole thing. What is this?
Now, that included the number of all the folks who had signed up to speak. Are there any folks who would like to speak now who had not signed up? Have an opportunity. Anyone? Back, is somebody there? Sorry, I can't.
Yes, hi, I'm Michelle Buehler. First of all, and we're not going to keep this very long. I'd like to state that Mr. Ardenice here, his intentions are ill-willed. And by that, I mean, these gentlemen have come up here and stated for the fact that this is going to cost them a lot of money. Well, that may be correct, but let's just get with the facts here. Mr. Ardenice supposedly purchased the place for four hundred thousand. Richard Mann just bought Mr. Ardenice out for one point five million. Rather, let me get that right. Mr. Richard Mann purchased the place for four hundred thousand in two thousand and eighteen. We're now in two thousand twenty-three, which Eugene Ardenice just purchased the place for one point five million. What drove up that price, I ask? It doesn't take rocket science to find out what drove up that price. The building as it stands is pretty much condemned. You are not allowed to go in it. There is extreme water damage on the roof. I know that for a fact. I live across the street. I'm surprised that the firemen are not here tonight to represent the townspeople. Why is that? Because they asked me in May, put the letters of whatever it's called on the doors to let them abruptly close. Mr. Ardenice did not close because the taxes were becoming due. Mr. Ardenice abruptly closed because the building is uninhabitable. So let's get with the program and understand where this is going. This is greed, nothing more. They do not have the townspeople's best interests at heart. They have money, and only money, to earn at heart. Now, as far as anything else that's concerning to the townspeople, which there's been experts up here, there's been other people that have spoke very eloquently. I myself, not so much. But, with that being said, obviously, the main aspect of this project and the developers riding in on their white horses is safety. This big project, safety is its number one issue. Anyone sitting here at this table cannot say that safety is not an issue. And then, we have a list of the safety issues which I am not going to go down the list again because we've heard over and over again tonight. We have fire, we have police, we have children with no green space. My God, what is it going to take to shut this down? This unfortunately is my first night coming to this. Again, because unfortunately, I wasn't aware of the meetings. Now, I'm probably the first person that knew about what was taking place across the street. There were lies going on around town, that this one owned it, that one owned it. No, no, no. Mr. Ardenice just purchased the place in July. Yeah, that's right. So let me tell you something. We do not need this on Route Two. There are so many safety issues. And if anyone of you would like a letter, I will list them kindly. Let's shut this down. Let's send this developer packing in all his crumbs. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak who had not signed up? Andy? All right? Tunnel?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't know if Cliff, the top leader, had, he had said he wanted to go through his comments, or are you all set? I should go ahead.
Go ahead.
All right. So we've taken notes of the issues, and we have obviously the notes of things that we committed to getting back to on. And I think probably what we'd like to do is just prepare the written responses for you and come back at the next hearing. We have between, I'm sorry, the hearing, I'm in nineteen. Between now and then, we have responses that we are providing based on comments we've received from the town engineer, fire department, and some of the other comments. So we're making some of these changes, preparing some of the information that we alluded to earlier about the potential uses of the green space. And we'll go through this list. I mean, I don't think it would be helpful to sort of go through it point by point this evening. I think it would be better for us to organize and respond that way. I think you should go through point by point.
I think at least, because not, everybody who spoke here may not be here for the second meeting. So I think if you could, at least quickly and at a high level.
Sure, sure.
I think that would be helpful.
Because you can want to ask them.
Correct.
Sure, well, so I'll just, I, you know, I'll do it. I'm going to do it at a high level. So if I, people had, you know, three minutes, I'm not going to go through each paper they made. Early on, I think the first comment, assuming there were to be two children per home, that's obviously not going to be the case. There are plenty of housing studies that will provide you the results of those studies. It shows, or depending on the product type, in other words, detached single-family, attached townhouses, number of bedrooms. There are studies that predict the amount of children that will be present, so we'll provide you with that. And we are already addressing, as part of those comments, the use of the additional play space. Again, we will identify also parks and open space areas that are available to all residents of Stoneington, the state of Connecticut, that can be used. And we remind everyone that not everyone lives on a one-acre lot. There are plenty of opportunities that parents can take their children to these destinations, and they do that. In terms of, there were a couple of comments about the auto turn. The auto turn, the way it works, Sergio can correct me if he wants to say more. But the concept is not to put auto turn, use auto turn for every vehicle the fire department owns. You can take the largest vehicle, and you won't use auto turn to show the geometry works for the largest wheelbase, and then the smaller wheelbases work. So I've done a lot of these. We've never done auto turn for every vehicle. But we can confirm, and I think Sergio included too, that the vehicle that we use is the appropriate town or stone unit vehicle. So we'll approve that, we'll confirm that for the next meeting. There was a lot of discussion of, you know, sort of echo weight concerns about what if this happened? What if, what if that happens? I mean, what we're trying to provide, and I think we've been very upfront about that, is safety is a key issue. And I think, you know, we recommend you look at the materials we provided. Yes, everyone agrees that an aquifer being contaminated is a negative thing, and it can be a very bad thing. And it happens. But you have to ask yourself, what's the source of the contamination? And that's what we've tried to provide you. What's the likelihood that it would occur? And balance it. There's always a risk. And you have, in your ground level protection area, you have prohibited uses. This is not a prohibited use, it's conditionally allowed use. So other uses, like a gasoline station, obviously don't make sense. But yet, you also have gasoline tanker trucks coming down Route Two. You could have an accident. They could hit a car, they could roll over. So yes, things are possible. But your job is to look at the evidence you receive and determine whether that risk is a real risk or not. So we commit you to the stormwater drainage study, which provides the renovation qualities of the stormwater, and compare that to what exists there today, which is less. Or the building design. These buildings meet all of the current life safety codes and building codes. You know, I hesitate to say, they're probably safer than a lot of people's homes that are built to prior codes. So look at those things. That's not to say we don't have things to address. But that's the point. It's not merely identifying the risk and saying, if that happened, that would be really bad. It's looking at the evidence of what precautions have been taken and what the results be. So that's what we've tried to give you. So that goes to some of the comments about aquifer protection and other risks. There were comments about, let's see, stormwater design. I think I covered that. And we will cover it again. You have a stormwater report that goes through the stormwater design. The traffic study, you know, there is a manual for traffic studies. This is what the DOT uses. This is what the state uses. There are, of course, anecdotal instances where people have had, there was an accident. We've looked at accident counts, we've looked at volume counts. If you put a product, if you put dense development in an area where there's no traffic, people say, well, it doesn't belong there. This is a side street. These are arterial roads. They're designed to move traffic. You have to get in and out of the road safely. But once you're in and out of the road, it's a state road. This is what they're designed for. So again, we have the traffic report. I'm not a traffic engineer, so Mike will look at some of these comments in a little more detail and explain to you how the capacity, how the existing volumes were calculated and what adjustments were made. And we'll report back to you on that. In general, this is standard industry format that all the other developers that you have come before you use, and this commission relies on, on those IT-generated numbers. Let's see, there were concerns, there was a mention of, will there be blasting? Yeah, why don't you address that? I don't know the answer.
So I don't like to use the term blasting because we don't necessarily need to blast. There may be some ledge removal that needs to be done. That can be done mechanically, and it can be done by blasting. And I can tell you in my experience that if blasting is required, there needs to be a very thorough blasting plan in place, as well as pre-blast surveys and post-blast surveys because it not only protects the neighbors that are in the vicinity, but also the developer or whoever owns the property, that those surveys are done. My family used to run quarries, and we did a lot of blasting. So you bring in a professional, it has to be cleared by the fire marshal. All very standard stuff. Is blasting the first thing you go to? Not preferably because of the risk involved with it, but it doesn't preclude the use of it above it, and there are ways to do it properly.
And as Sergio pointed out, it's a highly regulated area. There are, you would obviously follow any of those regulations. There was a mention of, that we were looking into, we had made a comment during our presentation about planting trees in the median between the parking area and two. And one of the commenters was that we, I think it suggested that we were making the comment that that area be available for play. Now, the only thing we're asking DOT permission to do is to plant trees in that area. That's not unusual. In fact, I think prior users have also had some plantings in that area. But it's up to DOT whether or not to approve it. We're not, if that was the difference that people drew, we were not talking about using that area for anything other than planting trees. Not for the traffic. In terms of police and fire, again, you know, we, not me, but our team has met with police and fire, and they've received comments, and they're working through them. But we have been responsive to them. And again, having the life safety codes built into the buildings provides two hours of protection between the units. The point is to get people out first, and that provides ample opportunity. There is no requirement for sprinkler systems, and the firewalls are used commonly in all projects. The fact that this development includes a component of affordable housing doesn't change the codes that apply to it. And we're not asking for any relief from those codes. In fact, what we're telling you is we're reading them. There was also, let's see, the trash pickup. I think we, or there was a mention that we're asking the town to handle the snowplow. That's true. We did, we did in our application say that we were going to ask that. We've been told the town is not going to do that. These will not be town roads. The interior area will not be town roads. So I just wanted to clear that up. You know, I think those are the categories of comments we received. I know I glossed over some of the details of them. So I think what we're saying is, it's not unusual to hear a lot of pushback about projects that include a component of affordable housing. And we are listening to those comments. But they still have to be measured against the safety regulations. Is it safe? The science, will the stormwater treatment system renovate the water? Will it create a, you know, will it improve conditions? Will it make them worse? Merely saying that these concerns exist, or that it's not where, you know, they want to raise their kids, doesn't make them unsafe. And that doesn't mean we're not taking those concerns to heart. And we will try to respond diligently to them. But this, you know, there will be, there are people who will want this housing product at the market value, at the affordable value. It does provide a community benefit. The courts in Connecticut have said, the benefits of affordable housing are near to the community because people need them for, people who work in the community, people who are firemen, people who are teachers, people who work in the service industry, or just anyone who qualifies. So it is a benefit for communities that have diversity of housing. Doesn't mean that we don't have to provide you with the information you're asking for. We're not saying that. We will respond to these issues. But that's the measure. It's not, is this the same type of housing that exists elsewhere in town? So with that, if you have questions, I'll try to answer them.
Is there anything more I may add to your question? Why are you asking for a waiver on the school impact evaluation report?
Well, because typically, the impact on schools is not a factor for approving or denying an application like this. It's not, it doesn't rise to that level. But I think what we're going to give you is, based on the conversation tonight, is an estimate of schoolchildren. So you'll be able to see, you know, we've done this in other towns, not every school child in the public school system, some private schools, some are homeschool. But it'll at least give you sort of a top-line estimate of kids. But that's why, because it's not really a criteria for decision-making on this application. Thank you.
Any more questions?
What is the market value of the units?
I don't know. Do you mean the non-affordable units?
The non-affordable.
Yeah, I don't know the answer to that. Obviously, we determined at the time will be greater than the affordable value.
But then how do you get to the affordable value? You had said those, huh?
There is a pro forma. There is a pro forma. I don't, I don't do that. That's not my area. But it's also not something we would ever, in other towns, ever have to pay for. It's not, you know, that's, that's how you get financing.
And the HOA fees, are those across to everybody or is it different?
Those apply to everybody.
The same or the formal or not?
They apply to everybody. But under the law, those fees will have to be calculated into the affordable price. So in other words, if the fee is greater, that gets backed out of the income statement that people have eligible to make payments. So a higher affordable, the people in those units, if they have to pay a higher HOA fee. Well, first of all, the answer is yes, they apply to everybody. If the fee is higher, then the price, the ultimate bottom line price goes down because it's backed out of their income. So it's not a way to hide, you can't hide the fee.
Yep. Thank you.
Anyone else? Sorry. There is no sidewalk along Liberty Street?
There are no sidewalks. Walks around along Route 2. I don't think there's any public property either. But if the DOT wants them in, we'll, we'll admit.
How about fencing anywhere?
I don't think there's any fencing there now. I mean, obviously, the neighbors. We're not calling for a fence. I mean, neighbors can put up their fences and we can, if you want us to look at a fence, we can do it. I mean, fences don't come cheap. But we can, and the kids running the track.
Especially the back area there, I think.
I'm sorry?
Especially in the back of what you're proposing, you know, where they could go back and.
We can look at fencing. But I mean, neighbors also can put fencing up if they want it there. But we will certainly, we'll look at it. And especially that back area, what you said. And, you know, it obviously doesn't take up much room. So why don't we come back and we'll, we'll come up with a fence style or something, you know? I don't assume you mean a privacy fence. Just something to mark the border and keep it going. Yeah, 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 not like a full screen.
Correct.
Okay.
Anyone else question, questions?
Question? Just to answer the affordability piece for Gary, that's, those calculations are included in the affordability plan. The affordability plan's not required to mention the market rates, but it is required by law to mention what would be the 80 and 60% calculations. And as Matt stated, those would be refined once the project would be approved and it would go through the proper permitting process of the state, those would be recalculated. But we have the draft plan that does show how that is calculated for everyone's pleasure.
Didn't you send up an email?
I, I received it earlier today, so I haven't distributed it.
We were going, I thought I had submitted it. So we only gave it to Clifton.
Yeah.
I perused it, it's 70 pages. We'll cross out.
Yeah, so we have, we have those calculations for anybody that's possible. What I want to comment on or just mention is that from the staff report, the recommendation is to continue the public hearing just to address any of these comments, both made by town staff as well as the general public tonight. The applicant has already pre-agreed to that. We've already discussed this quite in depth. And then additionally, this project was requested to go back before the ADRB as well as the police commission next month. So that's why we're talking about the later December date, which would be December 19th, not the December 5th meeting, was just to potentially incorporate comments that would come from those two commissions, which would meet after December 5th. So I just want to put that on everyone's radar. Our intention for the continuation would be at December 19th, not December 5th, which would be the next regular planning, or planning and zoning commission meeting. So that's just for everyone's reference. What, what 830G and specifically, what 830G and specifically section, subsection G of that states is the, the decision that the commission must make in order to potentially deny an application such as this. Since this is not required to meet our zoning regulations, there are specific criteria set through the law that have been mentioned in depth tonight. One of the things that I put in as the recommendation is that both for considering the approval of the project and or considering the denial of the project, the commission needs to develop objective criteria to assess public health and safety concerns. That, just from what the law states, you would have to do. Those have to be objective and not subjective or anecdotal experiences. So in thinking about that process and in thinking about the continuation of this, I would suggest that the commission consider looking into that or discussing that at a future meeting. All of that aside, that just shows kind of the path forward for this project. The one thing that I did want to provide is additional commentary, which I've included in the staff report, but for the general public as well, I'll make a brief mention of what I wrote. The applicant has been working with town staff pretty diligently since around June of this year when we first discussed the project. And we've worked together with the applicant on forwarding it to this point for the public hearing tonight. And I'll, I'll say from the staff's perspective, even though there's still significant questions or concerns, the applicant has worked with town staff and has slowly made improvements to implement those concerns. So just for everybody's perspective here, this hasn't been a stone wall sort of scenario where it's their way or the highway. They have worked with town staff in terms of implementing these concerns and it sounds like that they have continued to do that. But what has been mentioned both tonight and what both the applicant as well as members of the public have mentioned is that the, there's little flexibility in this project when it comes to creating a financially viable product. And so in order to achieve the affordable housing rate of 30%, that's required under the state law, they have to create 70% of market rate housing to supplement that cost. They've stated that pretty well. That's just, you know, general common sense in terms of a development and economic perspective. You wouldn't put something forward that is going to go into the red or not break even. That's just general economics. What I will say though is that, that is, that doesn't become the fault of necessarily the developer or the town itself. That becomes the fault of the legislation. And I would say that I think the general consensus between what has been heard from the commission as well as the general public tonight, real question is, is this legislation at the state level effective to do what the objective is, which is to create affordable housing? Because when you're, when you need to make sacrifices to the project concerning specifically green space, public safety, environmental quality in order to create a financially viable product that we both equally agree might be difficult to do, the only person, the only people that this impacts in the long term are the people that are going to be living there or living adjacent to it. And from that perspective, I guess my concern and what I've specifically wrote is not a question on the project itself, but it's a question to the state of Connecticut whether or not they prioritize the creation of affordable housing over the quality of life of the people living in it. Furthermore, I'd also question, is the state itself providing ample resources to support developers and municipalities in achieving those affordable housing goals? And further, does the town of Stonington itself possess the means and resources to support the high standard of living for its residents, regardless of income and housing standards, status? And when these resources fall short, who bears the burden? And the implied rhetorical answer is the people that live there. And so I would say that for anyone that has a concern about this project, I would start taking it up with your legislators because I think that this is a failure in state policy, not necessarily a failure in the developer or the town itself. That's all I have to say.
So for this commission's pleasure, you would like to continue this hearing?
They want to continue. Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. Just to be clear, we, we appreciate the comments and we would request that we continue to the hearing on the 19th. I think that'll give us the best. We, yeah, that'll give us the best chance to really work through the comments, through these other boards and have a more meaningful discussion than coming back soon.
Can I have one quick moment? More time? I called the town planner. He didn't, he told me about this.
Okay, I think, thank you. We have a motion to continue this hearing to December 19th. Do I hear a second?
Second motion, please.
And he does have a time. All in favor? Aye.
Does he want the vote to me?
Oh, okay. Second, second. Favor? Aye.